All right, we'll go ahead and call the council meeting of January 19th, 2021 to order. And Jim Bowden, will you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance? All others, if you'll please mute your mic.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic. Whoa, my phone.
With liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Joe, for popping in. I think we had some internet connection issues there, so appreciate the team effort on that.
Thank you. All right, I'm back.
I got your six.
Fantastic.
Wonderful. Donna, with that, will you please give us the roll call?
Yes, I will. Councilmember Inesco.
Here.
Councilmember Bowden.
Here.
Councilmember Feist.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Here.
Councilmember McDowell.
Present.
And Mayor Dorsey is not here.
Thank you, Donna. Does council have any late changes to the agenda this evening? Seeing none at this time. Oh, I apologize.
Deputy Mayor, do you want a motion to excuse the mayor?
Perhaps we should wait till we know if he's going to join us or not. If he's not joined us by the end of the meeting, we can go ahead and excuse that. What would be protocol for that, Donna, do you know? Since we're not sure.
Yeah, Deputy Mayor, I think waiting until the end, just before my manager's report would probably be appropriate.
Perfect. And thank you for bringing that up, Joe. All right, at this time, I would like to remind members of the public that they can make comments during the public comment period, as well as on any items listed on the business agenda or the action agenda. If you do have comment on an action item or a business agenda item, please let us know when we reach that item, so the conversation can be held at that time. There are three options. Option number one, join the Zoom meeting, as some of you have, by clicking the link displayed on the city's webpage. The link is listed on the agendas and minutes page under the tab that says more. Second option is to email City Manager Jeff Knighton. Or third, you can call Jeff's office phone. Both his email and cellphone and phone number are displayed on the screen of Mason Web TV's streaming service. With that, we'll move on to council reports. Do any council members have a board report to share?
I did it. Go ahead. I did attend the state auditor's exit interview today and wanted to thank Aaron and his crew for a perfect audit.
Thank you, Councilmember Inesco. And Councilmember McDowell, did I hear you as well?
Yeah, yes. I attended the exit audit also today. And it was very impressive and exciting to see that it was a great report. So anyway, that's where I was today.
Thank you. Any other council members that wish to make a report at this time?
Councilmember. Deputy Mayor, I'd like to exercise the point of personal privilege and just provide a short comment if you would allow.
Of course.
So, good evening, everybody. It's great to see a lot of folks on the meeting again tonight. It's great to have the public engagement throughout our proceedings here in the city of Shelton. I just wanted to share, you know, this last week has been, last two weeks have been incredibly busy, busy but interesting and very rewarding, I'll say. Lots of folks, spoken to lots of folks about the workforce housing project. And a lot of folks, I'm sure, that are joining us this evening are very interested in learning more about that project. But what really set this apart for me and what really humbles me is just the amount of civil discourse and discussion that has occurred with many, with many folks in our community. Some of my personal neighbors, business leaders in the community. It's just really been a humbling experience to be able to be engaged and have thoughtful conversation. I think I said last week something along the lines of, you know, engagement from people and people quizzing us and asking questions is what makes good things great. And in this situation, you know, we, I believe, we're looking at a really good project, and it's going to become an even better project because of the engagement and the participation we're getting. And, you know, if you, if you ever try to think of a recipe for success to municipal government or any level of government, I've, I've thought about, you know, what, what does that recipe look like? And the first thing I think is, in that, in that outline, is fully understanding and knowing what the problem is, what the issue is. Over the last three-ish years, I know all of us have sat down and had discussions in our various networks. The previous city commissioners also did. And, you know, we, we've really taken the time to dig in while not creating gridlock and, you know, indecision and indecisiveness. We've, we've spent time, hours, days, weeks researching issues. And workforce housing has definitely been one of those issues that we have come to learn a lot about. So, again, first step is understanding the problem. We've, we've definitely spent the time there, and there's still more work to do. The second piece of that recipe is having an engaged community. Having people here in the meetings, having people engaged with us along the way builds trust, builds a collaborative environment, things that we need to achieve greatness. And outside of that is just the general partnerships that we've fostered here at the city. We've all worked, and I, and I commend you all, all of the council members and city staff. We've all worked very hard over the last several years to build a professional organization, to establish criteria for the ways we make decisions, the three touch rules that were created by the previous city commission that have been adopted by the city council. We respect the process. I think all of us here do. And, you know, it may not always be perfect. It'd be naive to think that there is a perfect solution. But, you know, in order for us to, to get to, you know, a great project, get through a great project to, to get to a great solution, we need all of those components. We need to know what our issues are. We need to know how to move to advocacy and action in a methodical way. Thank you for keeping us in check. Thank you for continuing to stay engaged with us. And, and please hang with us throughout. Our phones are on, the doors are open, the email flows. So, thank you for your time, and back to the, back to the meeting.
Thank you, Councilmember Schmidt. I will also just give a brief comment that both commissioner, excuse me, council member, McDowell and I sat in on the Wyro 14 meeting along with Ken Gill from city staff at the end of last week, which discusses some of the water table concerns in this area and the partnerships available with the county, both Mason County and Thurston, the tribes and other partners in the area. So, that plan's been sent to council, the draft plan for red flag remarks. So if there's anything in it that's concerning before that comes to council as a whole, that feedback would be very much appreciated. And you can contact Kathy Rye or Jeff Knighton or Ken Gill on that. So, anything else from the council this evening?
Just a quick update on progress for opioid reduction, use reduction in the county. The joint opioid task force met last week and did a great report out on the services that are being provided despite the challenges with COVID. There's definitely more coordination for us to be doing, so that there's work that's happening with different checkpoints for folks. And then also, we asked for some additional information around the rates of folks that are in, in active treatment as well, because that wasn't part of the presentation. So, I'll bring that back when we have more information, so that we can talk about all the data.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Feist.
Yeah, and really quick too, just to add on to Joe's comments, again, it's a huge appreciation for the community to be active in our open processes. And it's exciting, you know, it's, it's exciting to have these, these discussions and to come together to, for solutions, you know, for our community as a whole. So, thanks, everybody, for being here tonight.
Absolutely. That will move on to our consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as published?
I move to accept the consent agenda as published.
Thank you, Kathy. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Eric. There has been a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda as it was published. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries, and I see that Mayor Dorsey has joined us. So, Mayor Dorsey, would you like to take back over your meeting here?
You want me to take over or you just continue?
We'll let you resume your leadership role, but we've just reached the presentation, so it's a perfect spot to hand that off.
All right. Thank you, Deidre.
My pleasure.
Sorry I'm late, everybody. So, we're at a presentation. So, we have several presentations this evening. The first is a video of the swearing-in of our new chief of police.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to share my screen here. Chief Beeson is here with us tonight, and we're going to show a, just a real short video of her swearing-in ceremony for the folks that weren't able to watch. See if I can get my screen share working here. Okay. Can everybody see that?
Not yet.
Well, technology problems are always fun. Let me try again. All right. How about now? No?
There, there. It's coming.
We got it.
Nothing's happening.
So, I'll go ahead and hit play, and we'll watch the short video.
I am from Wiesn.
You're a sworn.
I'm a sworn.
But I will support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of Washington.
And the Constitution of the State of Washington.
And I will abide by the laws of the Department of Shelter.
And I will abide by the laws of the Department of Shelter.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of chief police for the City of Shelton. Discharge the duties of chief of police for the Shelton Police Department.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Now, we'll have Mike and the Raja on board.
Hey.
All right, so we wanted to, wanted to show that and be able to share that with the, with the wider community. Very happy to have Chief Beeson here, and that's all for the presentation. All those, council has any question?
All right. That was kind of a fun little thing we got to do, huh, Carol?
Yes, it was.
All right, let's move on. The next presentation is an update to our Shoreline Master Program. Senior Planner Jason Doth has the detail.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, members of the council. As, as you're all aware, this summer, the council authorized staff to accept a grant from the Department of Ecology to the tune of about $17,000. The intent of the grant is to help support our efforts to do what's called a periodic update to our Shoreline Master Program. Historically, you know, cities kind of, you know, you update your master program when you have to, and by the time the state comes around again, you've got a massive job to do. So, the city last updated our master program in 2013. Before that, it was 1995. So, when I was on staff in 2013, and it was a monumental task to, you know, identify and change the language and update everything to current state laws, state standards. So, on a moving forward process, the state has decided, I think rightfully so, that we kind of just take a quick look, make sure everything's square relative to updated state law, Department of Ecology guidance, these sorts of things. So, what, what you have before you in this packet is my strikeout and underline version, basically, of all the changes that the city is required to do to maintain compliance with the Growth Management Act and, you know, regulate our shorelines in a manner consistent with current science, current guidance, and current state law. The surprising thing I found, I mean, if you, if you went through all the changes, they're actually very, very boilerplate and rudimentary. Most of them only update processes and identify new timeframes, like for ecology, to review our conditional use permits. It updates the exemptions. It updates definitions in a few instances. The only substantive change, in my opinion, is to our critical areas ordinance. In 2014, the Department of Ecology updated the Western Washington Guidance for Identification, Typing, and Protection of Wetlands. And we hadn't yet updated our critical areas ordinance. So, doing it as part of the Shoreline Master Program update. And even those changes really aren't that substantive. The, the buffers didn't change much, but the typing system did. Because, you know, science being science, they're constantly updating the procedures for identification and typing of these, these types of resources. So, I'm not asking the council for any action tonight. This is more just a advertisement, as it were, to kind of begin the public process. What, what my next step is going to be is to work with Mary Ricker, our communications staff person. I'll get these changes, proposed changes, up on our website. I'll be reaching out to local tribes, to local shoreline stakeholders, the master builders, the yacht club, and just kind of walking them through, see if they have any concerns with these changes. And, you know, frankly, I'm not expecting too much out of it. I mean, they, they are that boilerplate. So, I don't, I don't really have much else for you, but if, I'd certainly welcome any questions if you have them. But I would expect to be back before the council, maybe mid-March to mid-April-ish, depending on how the process goes, to kind of walk our stakeholders through the proposed changes. But that, that's when I would be coming back with Department of Ecology staff and doing our push, as it were, to get these changes officially adopted.
Kathy?
Yes. Are we talking, I know down, further down here, you're talking about erosions of the land, hazardous areas, erosion of hazardous areas. Where would those be?
Um, are you just?
I'm on page 20. And it's talking about the erosion hazardous area in part of it.
Well, that would be in our critical areas ordinance, geologic hazards. They're not proposed for changes, though.
Anything on like the Goldsboro Creek or anything? Is that in, included in that?
Yes and no. I mean, Goldsboro Creek would be regulated more in the stream section of our critical area, critical areas ordinance. And any alteration to a fish-bearing stream falls under kind of some different rules.
Okay.
Right?
Okay. I'm not real clear on what, you know, how much erosion you're talking about for those places, but that kind of caught my eye. Living down here near the creek and seeing that, that it is eroding on the sides and, you know, what happened.
Creeks, creeks meander. It's, it's what they do. And ours is a very channelized creek from about the railroad bridge above Seventh down to Oakland Bay.
Right. Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember, steep slopes are generally where we're talking about erosion. So, any slopes really over typically about 40% are a hazard area. 20 to 40% are less of a hazard, but still designated as critical areas. So, think of the hillside above Loop Field would be something that falls under that particular section.
Okay. Thank you.
Joe, do you have something?
Yeah, just a quick question. And this may be a little early in the game. But Jason, recently I caught wind that the county is looking to potentially establish something called a shellfish protection district. And in the, over the course, you probably may not be aware or you are, but I'm just wanting to throw that out there, that over the course of vetting this through the, our partners, just making sure that, you know, we may be in line with whatever changes that may be coming from the county.
No, I hadn't heard they were doing that, but certainly, yeah, those would be one of the stakeholders. I'll be reaching out to Kel, the director over at the county. We're a bit limited, though, given the location of our wastewater treatment plant. So, there's, there's some kind of a permanent closure areas that we can't really do anything about, you know, in, in, in the city's jurisdiction, anyway.
Thank you.
All right, so now we're going to move on to Public Works Director Jay Harris regarding the street standards.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council, and public. Jay Harris, your Public Works Director. So, tonight I have a street standards presentation for you. And what I wanted to do is discuss the policies that are current and currently in place. We're working on an engineering standards manual upgrade. That's chapter two, the streets section. They'll be coming to council probably in the next couple of months, something like that. We're also working on a municipal code update, which will include provisions in the development code. And those tie into street standards as well as other policies such as the comprehensive plan and the international fire code. So, I'm going to share my screen and go through PowerPoint that was part of the packet. Can everybody see that? So, the first slide, I showed this to you guys probably three or four months ago. I dug these pictures out of the archive, and they're really interesting. I'm going to use them for my street presentations. And you can see in 1917, the dirt roads, it was not good around here, right? Usually have your mechanic go with you everywhere to keep your car running and to help you dig out of a big mud hole. In 1926, the first road was paved. It was Portland cement concrete back then. And then Cota Street in the 40s. I like the old cars and the facades and everyone walking around. Give me just a moment here. Here we go. So, some documents for street standards. So, as I mentioned, we have the 2017 Shelton Comprehensive Plan, the transportation element part of the comprehensive plan. We have water and sewer and other things in there, too. Shelton Municipal Code, there's streets and sidewalk in Title 12. We have the international fire code. There's an update coming to you guys soon to go from an older version to the 2018 version. The 2019 Department of Ecology Stormwater Manual for Western Washington. We need to start integrating that into our street standards as part of our, our next phase of stormwater compliance. Our streets need to have some integrated stormwater facilities with them. And then the 2019 Design and Construction Standards, that's the document that we're proposing to update. So, in the comprehensive plan, there's a thing called a functional classification map. And in there, you can see all these colors. So, red is the freeway, blue are principal arterials. Then you have the major collectors and minor arterials and minor collectors, all the way down to the local streets that don't have any color. The intent of the classification map or plan is to show the roadways that transmit traffic. So, as you go up higher in classification, access is limited. And you want to try to move traffic from A to B, whereas the local streets, you have unlimited access for the most part. So, I did a little example here. This is Highway 101. That's freeway, very limited access. You can see the overpass here. And then on a principal arterial right through downtown, you know, railroad is limited, is supposed to be limited access, which probably would mean controlled parking, right? Very high average daily traffic. That's what ADT stands for. And so, that'd be Railroad Avenue, Olympic Highway North, our roads that really move traffic through the city. Minor arterial, that's modern traffic. So, that's Brockdale, 13th, Arcadia, Johns Prairie Road. Major collector is the next step down. You're increasing access here. It has moderate traffic. And that's Lake Boulevard, Turner, North Cliff, Shelton Springs Road. And then minor collectors have even more increased access, quite a bit lower traffic. You know, you're looking at probably 2,500, 2,000 trips per day on a minor collector. And that's Fairmont, Wyandotte, and San Marquinh. There's a bunch of others, obviously, right? And then on a local street, those go up to about 1,200 trips per day. Each house produces about 10 trips per day. And so, it doesn't take much to really get local streets going. That way, that's why in the comprehensive plan, we have gridded street systems, and a lot of streets, you know, connect. And so, no one street takes all the traffic. That's the reasoning by, you know, to and through and connectivity of streets. So, you'll notice on this local street, there was a curbed tight sidewalks and curbs and full width paving with it. So, I jumped into the comprehensive plan real quick, that we're supposed to adopt this transportation system. So, we did in 2017. It was actually based on an older study that the city had done. One of the projects I have in the future is actually update our transportation comprehensive plan. The update in 2017 wasn't a full, like we go to traffic counts and modeling and that sort of thing. So, one of the projects engineering is going to get in a couple of years is have to update our transportation plan. So, in our 2019 Design and Construction Standards, they included each of these roadways in the standards. And then it spoke of pedestrian bike facilities. And staff at that time was working on the sidewalk prioritization plan and to expand the city's sidewalk system. And that we're working at that time on a complete streets policy that has not got to you yet. So, complete streets are integrated stormwater facilities, walking, connectivity, connectivity to businesses, residential, street trees, crossings, good sidewalks, curb, bullbouts, parking where needed, those sorts of things. Bus turnouts to incorporate everything into one street design, which you guys will be seeing. I think Ken has that on his list for later this year or first part of 2022. So, we did define the critical pedestrian routes. They're in the Design and Construction Manual. They're on page 18 of the PowerPoint. I'll show it to you in a few minutes. So, transportation demand strategies. So, what this is, is to try to get people out of their car to non-motorize, to having a person ride with you and someone else in the backseat, and try to get people out of these single trip travel modes and try to get less cars on the road, obviously. Try to move people to different parts of the day when they travel to get out of the AM and PM peaks. And then share a lot of access in commercial district. So, one of the goals of the standards manual is to try to incorporate some of these things as much as possible. And in terms of transportation and land use, you want transportation to be compatible with surrounding uses. And you want to support growth and economic vitality for the comprehensive plan. A lot of that is extending collectors and arterials properly and keeping up on the transportation demands and make sure that we're building streets big enough for the future, so we don't end up having to bulldoze a bunch of houses down the road, acquire right-of-way, and get into a really expensive arterial roadway project. So, and then in T3B, that's where new development or redevelopment needs to incorporate transit pedestrian and non-motorized measures. and non-motorized measures. So that's sidewalks, paths, crosswalks. Try to minimize walking distances. That's downtown, cluster buildings. That's down more for downtown. Extend the connectivity of pedestrian, bike cycle and the grid streets. Really important that we do to and through and we have sidewalks that go places and streets that go places. Traffic calming measures are important too. You know, we don't want people zooming down these local roads and causing problems. So a lot of times you'll see, we try to limit blocks to two or three and then put a big jog in the street. So people have to chicane around a little bit to get through some of these local neighborhoods. More shared access. The shared access is on the collectors and arterials. That as you go up in ADT trips per day, you want less accesses onto that road, especially people that are like backing out onto the road, that sort of thing. That's never any good when you try to get traffic through. You want to design a transit access and work more on the stops and shelters as part of the comprehensive plan. And then the development projects need to be accessible to all citizens for many different modes of travel. That includes ADA criteria that we need all of our new streets where possible to meet ADA. Sometimes you get into steep areas and you can't. And then there's one more of this T3D that they want to improve traffic flow on First Street. And this could be in a one like couplet, roundabouts, that sort of thing. So down the road, we should be tasked that traffic light is the multiple traffic lights and the backup and all that. This T3D, you know, eventually we need to come up with a future strategy and start talking to WashDOT about a 20-year plan of what we're doing down there. So we need to minimize travel times. That's good, right? And we need to get convenient access from arterials to residential neighborhoods. You know, I'll say right, when you look at access to Highway 101, it's, you gotta go around the block in a lot of areas to get down to an arterial to go the wrong way to get all the way back to 101. And so in the future, we need to look at this more direct connectivity type of routes. If you look at the transportation plan, it shows a bunch of dash lines, which means this is a future road to increase and reduce travel time. So people can go towards 101 and not away and then, and then back to it again. So we want to try to keep block length short and, and then try to minimize the long local streets as I mentioned earlier. So in the municipal code, this pretty much just said, we're going to put sidewalks in everywhere. This has been around for a long time. Any development puts in sidewalk, that's like the minimum standard. That's very, very common in, in older cities. That you'll put in a base roadway improvement and you'll at least put in sidewalks to get people out of the travel lanes, walking along the roadway. And then with newer develops, developments in the subdivisions, you put in roadside planners, curb drainage, water quality facilities, that sort of thing. So frontage improvement charge, this was put in sometime around 2016. And what this was for anybody that was in the neighborhood residential zone that was redeveloping an existing lot of record and from 1938 was the date on that. That they didn't have to put in the half street improvement. But the idea was, was they were going to pay a frontage improvement charge to offset the costs of the half street improvement. So we could go work on critical pedestrian routes. Well, somehow or another, the base fee was set at zero for the frontage improvement charge. No money was ever collected. And so people aren't paying the charge. They're not building the half street. They're not building sidewalks. And so we're not doing anything on the critical pedestrian routes or in front of the, the homes that they're building. So here's a little more about the fringe improvement charge. No funds were collected. So the fire code. So what the fire code is trying to say is we gotta get this big, heavy ladder truck and engines with water in it up to sites to put out fires and rescue people. And what happens is, is if you have substandard roadways, some gravel roads in the city that are not well maintained. The fire truck either takes longer to get there or doesn't get there because it gets stuck for one reason or another. So they set in here this 75,000 pound emergency vehicle. Limit, that's pretty heavy. So our road sections that we have, our, our new roadway sections can support that load. There's a bunch of roads in the city that would not support. Now, we keep them maintained though. Our maintenance guys are out there filling potholes, grading gravel roads all the time and keeping them up the best they can. But the goal is, is to try to get all roads improved, paved that can support this minimum load. So then they start talking about widths and they're saying if a road has a fire hydrant on it, they want to be able to pull off to the side and to let people still go by and put a fire out on that side of the road if possible. Hopefully the hoses aren't going across the road. So they're saying minimum roads are 26 feet wide. That's if we have fire hydrants, which is usually the case for most of our developments. So also they allow parking on, on a road that's not 26 feet wide on one side only. They also don't want any super steep roads. 10% is getting up there. I would say Alder Street going up the hill is probably close to 10%. It might be at 12. Some roads you have to exceed that grade, but the fire marshal would approve that instance. So they also talk about turning radius. That's really important. They gotta get around corners and especially on dead end roads, you see down here, there needs to be a cul-de-sac down there. Backing up a big fire truck or any big truck is never any fun. They want to get in there, come around and hit their next call. So they have some turnaround standards that we need to make sure our design standards meet. Signs, if the road is 20 to 26 feet in width, you sign both sides with no parking. They don't want people to encroach onto that roadway to block it so they can get by. If you hold that truck up for a minute, that can mean a life and death of somebody out there, you know, having an emergency. And so it's important, you know, to start following these things. So if a road is 26 feet wide or more, parking is allowed on one side. And then 32 feet wide, you can park on both sides of the roadway. So we need to adjust our design standards to allow for that. They also have this criteria that if you have a building over 30 feet in height, they want to get the ladder truck to it. And so they want to be able to pull off the ladder truck off to the side, but still be close enough to the building to rescue someone from the roof or from the second floor. So that's what they're talking about here. So access roads again, this is aerial equipment. And they want 26 feet in width. They want to make sure they get buildings close to, if they exceed 30 feet, then they get the ladder over to it. A lot of this applies to downtown. I was really interested when I read this overhead utility and power line thing that it can't be along the building. That actually makes sense. You can't go rescue someone from the street and put your van through a bunch of electrical conductors, right? So when I saw that, it was interesting. So down the road, we need to underground utilities, especially where we can have a higher incidence of fires, especially like downtown where you have unsprinkled buildings, that sort of thing. That we need to make sure they can get up there and get people out. So then on multifamily residential areas, they want to make sure there's two ways in and out. In case the primary route, a tree falls down or something, they can't get in there, they can get in, in and out a second direction. And then, and then one, and down here in just residential developments, that if you're over 30 units, they want two ways in and out also. And then if you can't get the second way in and out, you can put these automatic, the fire sprinkler systems in, in the residential homes. You've probably seen that maybe around here. It adds cost to the house, about $2 a square foot. So they get a little expensive. They have newer systems now that integrate with the piping of your whole house and they say you can get down to about a buck 20 a square foot. Cause you flow through the fire system the whole time. So the state of, the State Department of Ecology Stormwater Management Manual, Ken Gill's coming to the next meeting with you to show you some of these things. So these are integrated swales to roads that we're going to be bringing into the road standards. And we'll have street trees in there and you have sedges and rushes that you plant in here. So you get stormwater quality and quantity controls both in here and you get infiltration. So the water's going back to where it used to go a long time ago before we even built all these impervious surfaces. So here's where the rubber sort of meets the road is here is a table that we had in the engineering and design construction standards. This is the older one here. And it talks about pavement widths and right of ways and design limitations and access and that sort of thing. So in here, we talk about on street and alley improvements. And this one here was talking about the frontage improvement charge. It said zero right now. So it's not really working. This is any lot in the residential, neighborhood residential lot of record. They're not paying a frontage improvement charge. They're not constructing a half street. They're not paving the street out front. If, and a short path falls into that group too. If you do a subdivision, which is more than five lots, they have to do all the half street improvements and all that sort of thing. So there's actually a, a quite a bit of separation between existing lots. And if you're building more than five lots, the standards. So we want to try to tighten those up a little bit, maybe in the future. So the next one here, number B, is if you're dealing small projects with utilities and stuff, you don't have to build the full street improvement. So this next one here, that this says you have to build your street frontage out. Unless you're paying the frontage improvement charge, nobody's paying the charge. So again, there's, there's issues here with the existing code. And then this D here, minimum improvements of any development or required developer, clear and grade 15 feet of the right of way, measured from the center line, irrespective of the location of the travel roadway. That doesn't need the fire code or anything. We need to get roads a little wider. Fire code already says 26 feet. This 15 feet should already be improved anyways. I think it probably just goes away. And then alley frontage improvements, there's some standards for those. That they just need to support, obviously, the 75,000 pound vehicle and be paved. So here is the critical pedestrian route map. You can see someone did a good job. They're pretty much on all the arterials and collector roadways. And the goal of the map is to get people walking around all over the place. It was never developed much more than this. No fees were ever collected for it. And this, this was never implemented. So in mixed use and non-residential zone, they want the streets and alleys all to be paved here. Cul-de-sac in the engineering design standards, it's a little big right now. We're actually able to reduce it. The older standards are a little bit wider. And then temporary dead end roadways, the fire department has really bad problems with those. We usually put a cul-de-sac in there. If it's a permanent dead end, we'll allow a hammerhead turnaround if the street's going to be extended in the future. This half street improvement needs to be 26 feet in width, as we spoke of earlier, needs to be paved. The fire code says things are paved of concrete or asphalt. And a half street typically is 26 feet of pavement, parking on one side. This is a local street. A curb, a planter strip with street trees, potentially a water quality facility and a sidewalk along the right of way. That's typically how you build a half street. So the recommended standards here, this is just an idea. I got a bunch of details we came up with that indicate revised standards that are actually quite a bit smaller than the previous design standards, which should save people quite a bit of money. The, the fire codes have been revised and some of the lane widths and stuff were less than what were needed on some of the arterial roadways, which was good. So I was able to really, to shave down some of the standards here to save a little bit of money to, to some developers along these roadways. So anyways, a couple takeaways, we need to support the fire vehicle here. Gravel roads are supposed to be paved for the fire code in the future. We got to figure out a way to do that. Somewhere around 20 feet of paving, no parking on both sides. That, and that's to get to a site. So if you have a subdivision with a gravel road to it with another, you know, eight lots, that's not a good thing. So you go down a gravel road to get to a subdivision that's building all these streets, you know, there's a problem here that, you know, the fire departments could potentially have a problem. And then we need to work on our half street standards, actually fully develop half streets adjacent to developments. Encourage more parking. So parking, if you have a curb, people aren't out in their yards. They're not compacting the soil. They're not driving over our water meters. This is one of our biggest problems right now is keep people off of the water meters. They're up on the yards parking all over. If there's a developed street with curbs and a planter and a sidewalk, we're putting our meters at the back of the sidewalk. They're not getting damaged by vehicles, but the guys are constantly out dealing with water meter issues. So the frontage improvement charge isn't working. My recommendation is we need to go away from that and, and come up with probably better tools. Need to plant street trees. So street trees are an important part of stormwater management. The trees intercept rainfall, especially as they get larger. And you get a lot of transpiration from the trees, evaporation and soaking in, into the leaves. The roots obviously pull up a bunch of water. They also shade the, the pavement during the summer months. It's important for stormwater quality for temperature, right? That we want shading of our streets in the future. And then they just give street appeal, right? You drive down a nice tree street and it's just beneficial to the property owners and to the community. Need to figure out a way how we're going to maintain the sidewalk, the planter strip and the future street trees. We have a limited number of city staff and with most cities, the sidewalk, streets, trees and the, the planter strip are the responsibility of the property, the adjacent property owner. So one thing is, is downtown though, that we need to adopt a little different standards for downtown. That I put a legal description of where downtown is. And we have commercial street standards, a little wider. They're a few feet wider than a local street. We have on-street parking both sides. I was thinking, you know, there's a lot of Portland cement concrete streets. They're aging a little bit. They're not asphalt streets. I think to keep the old, because they were built that way and a long time ago, is to keep with the old, keep the old there. And do asphalt streets where they're already done that way, but repair the old Portland cement concrete streets and keep them up and going as long as we can before we have to overlay them or pave them. We also need to make sure that we dedicate right of way and design these arterial and collector streets downtown appropriately. Downtown sidewalks need to be 10 feet wide from the curb line. Done a pretty good job of that. And they need to extend from the curb line all the way to the right of way line. That way that buildings, there's no little small planter strips or weeds growing in there or whatever. Put in a bunch of downtown streets, street trees, 30 feet on center. Put in root barriers in the future. Costs a little more money, but we pay for it later. These sidewalks are heaving and causing all sorts of issues. Need to get that root barrier in. And the, the 30 foot spaces will be modified a little bit for site conditions, obviously. And the thirty-foot spaces will be modified a little bit for site conditions, obviously. And then the important thing is, is I think the city needs to maintain the downtown sidewalks, the, the, the street trees, the tree grates. We need to take care of all that and keep tripping hazards and let the businesses do business. And keep that our responsibility downtown. But the rest of the city, make it the adjacent property owners. Here is a table. This, and you guys can look at it later. I'm not going to go all this over this, but you'll see a lot of the standards got reduced here on page twenty-four. That from the prior standards that were in the manual. And down here, I showed all the different revisions were, and you guys will be seeing all these later. So next steps, are you guys interested in continuing discussion to update the street improvement standards? And what do you think about what I've talked about so far? Do you have some things you want to add? That's the end of my presentation.
All right. Thank you, Jay. Kathy, you have your hand up?
Yeah. I, there's some cities around the United States that have adopt a sidewalk, adopt a street. Families do it, businesses do it, individuals, organizations, Rotary, Kiwanis Lions. And they keep, I'm not exactly sure what they do, but they adopt a space and they keep it. They work with the city and they keep it fresh and nice looking. Is there something that we could do like that?
Hundred percent, yes. So remember I was talking about frontage improvements that need to be maintained by the property owner? So that would be the street trees and the sidewalk and the planter. That's fine on local streets where you live there and your kid's riding the big wheel out front all the time. But a lot of those have reverse frontages. So when you get to the arterial and collectors, the street trees and the weeding out there and those sorts of things on the higher volume roads, a hundred percent, yes. That we need to involve the community in safely maintaining those, right? That, you know, we don't need them out there working in live traffic or anything.
No, no.
But we, I would highly encourage that and give recognition to people that, that take some of these streets over to, to help us, just picking up garbage, that sort of thing.
Yeah, Lions Club is looking for a project like that. So just put that in your ear, in your pocket and think about that.
Anyone else have?
I have some questions. You didn't quite, you know, you didn't quite get to them, but I'm sure we're possibly not there yet. Just about like some of the frontage improvements and those fees. Just wondering more about what those are going to actually look like. Cause I know at one point we had something that was put on people building in the city or even people doing an improvement that was over fifty percent of the property's value where they had to put in sidewalks and storm drains. And it made it pretty undoable to be able to do like a single home in the city that way and have to take on the burden of sidewalks and storm drains and especially like a half street improvement. Where does that get absorbed? What kind of fees are those?
That's all your policies. That's, I'm just giving you guys recommendations and suggestions. That came from another city. And what that said was at a certain point, if you're building something, you have some responsibilities to the roadway. You set a valuation there of whatever the improvement is versus what the, the raw, the raw ground was. If it was like an undeveloped lot. And then you also set it to how many trips per day is that person generating? Are they generating a lot or none at all? So like you take an existing residential lot on a roadway right now, let's say it's a gravel roadway. And someone wants to go build a garage shop just to park their cars in. They own the adjacent lot, that's where their house is. Well, one of the ideas is, is, you know, they don't meet valuation thresholds or trips per day thresholds. So they don't do anything. They go build their garage, they're good to go, right? So the, the goal there was, was to set up for residential and for commercial some thresholds of when you would start paving the street out front or putting in a curb or putting in a sidewalk. Cause what happens is, is when you give it to the day-to-day staff, it gets a little confusing unless you have just a policy that everybody does it, right? If you have a table and some criteria that people can follow that makes sense, which you guys helped develop, that allows engineering staff to apply equally to everybody of various standards. So all that was, was a suggestion of to start developing some sort of table of what do you do when?
Okay.
Okay.
And I, I just want to add real quick, as you can see from some of Jay's presentation, our fire code, our city code and our engineering standards don't match. And it's very important for us to have a cohesive message when somebody wants to come in and invest in the community. Make it easy. That's make it easy and make it simple. So people understand what the requirements are and they're not confused by conflicting, conflicting requirements. We want to streamline this and make it simple for people to do. The reduction in standards of the right of way is a really good example. And most of the rights away in the city, even residential streets were sixty feet wide. And there is absolutely no reason for a residential street to be that role, that wide. It takes up a lot of land that could be put to beneficial use. So those are just some of the examples. And as we get into updating the development code, you'll see a lot more of these things. And our goal is to be consistent across the board so that there reduces confusion as much as possible.
All right, anybody else?
Mr. Mayor, I got a question. Does there a comment here? Director Harris is definitely a lot of information. And what I would say is it's probably not an update, but an overhaul. You know, I, I am a fan of having standards. I'm a fan of adopting standards that are consistent with other municipalities that make sense for us in Shelton. Jeff, you just basically answered one of my questions, which is why is this important to us? And I firmly agree with you that consistency is important. And having standard ways of doing business is important so people understand what and how we operate. That said though, I believe this is something we're probably going to want to take in chunks instead of trying to digest in one bite. So I'm interested in what the other council members are kind of thinking and of how we want to tackle this. I think there's a lot to talk about and one of the things Jimbo just brought up, I didn't even think about. So yeah, I'm interested in, in having more collaborative discussion for sure.
Absolutely, and we will, we have a draft public involvement plan that I'll talk about a little bit later during my manager's report at the end of our meeting tonight. But there, it will definitely be chunks and it will, it will take a significant amount of time, not just for this, but our zoning code, our development code and everything else to make sure everything matches up. And it matches up at the policy direction of the council, how you would like to see it moving forward.
All right. Thank you, Jay. Our last presentation is about the city's 2019 accountability and financial audit. Financial manager Terry Snitzer will share the details with us.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members and members of the public. As Councilmember McDowell and Anisco stated, we did hold the 2019 Audit Exit Conference today with the Washington State Auditor's Office and I'll often refer to them as SAO, so easier to say. And so this is where we find out how we did for reporting of 2019. And, and actually received their final audited report. So I am very pleased to inform you that we had a very clean audit with no findings or management letters, which is a really big deal for the city. So the auditor's office conducted a financial audit and an accountability audit. The financial audit is where they look over our financial statements that we put together to make sure things are put in the right place and that our totals balance to our financial software records. And as well as what is required by SAO to report in this annual report. As you know, we've great, greatly improved in this area over the last few years and just very excited to report that it was a clean financial audit and with no exit items to report to you. So those, yeah, those exit items, even though they're not published, that SAO publishes in the report is just, it was just excited to know that there was no exit items in that area. So then they also do an accountability audit where they audit areas for fraud, loss, abuse or non-compliance. So SAO audited the areas of payroll, capital assets, accounts payable, specifically credit cards and electronic fund transfers, procurement, cost allocation plan, financial condition concerning COVID-19, contracts and interlocal agreements. So there, again, there was no findings or management letters in this area either. There were four exit items in the accountability audit. The SEO recommends for management consideration, just basically to clean up and, and or add to our procedures. So the first one was the credit card disbursements. They found four receipts that did, that were not itemized to where the auditor couldn't tell what was purchased on the credit card. And in the area payroll, SAO found where employees were paid all those small amounts using a miscellaneous code, which did not have proper supporting documentation of what the miscellaneous payment was for. The third one was procurement prevailing wages. It needed to include prevailing wage information linked to the LNI website. And then four was capital assets. They need to be better tracked. Since we went from gap accounting to cash accounting, that kind of slid to the wayside. And now we were, we're currently getting that corrected. So, but we want to thank all the city departments for their diligent work throughout the whole year of 2019, so that the information that we compile and put together to put this annual report together, it really truly was a team effort and that is so appreciated of all the finance team members. And lastly, we want to thank the council and city manager Jeff Knighton for your support in our finance initiatives to ensure that we account for things appropriately. And hopefully we can continue these excellent audits. So thank you very much for your time tonight. Any questions?
I have a comment. I just want to thank you guys so much. I know you've worked so hard for the last couple of years to get our finances in order. And not only to you and Aaron and the rest of the finance team, but like you said, the whole department. Whole council appreciates it.
Thank you.
Well done.
Thank you.
I just want to make a, can I make a comment? One more comment, Terry. I'm just bubbling all over in this report and it was so exciting to be there today to watch. And so I'm just proud and happy and just want to keep up the good work. We just encourage you all the time to persevere. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We appreciate that.
Oh yeah, and I had one more thing. I wish, I hope that the community realizes what you guys have done down there. It's, it's amazing.
Thank you. We appreciate your support.
All right, anything else? All right. We'll move on to our general public comment. Donna, do we have anyone interested in making a general public comment?
Let me scan this list here and see what I see. No, Mr. Mayor, we do not.
All right, so we'll move on to our business agenda. Moving on to the business agenda, Jeff, will you give us an update on the workforce housing development project?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of council and members of the public. You'll notice tonight that there is no boat scheduled for the development agreement, but we did want to keep this item on the agenda so that folks can continue to participate in the, the ongoing discussions surrounding workforce housing. Couple of things that I wanted to mention and try and make clear. There are a couple of things I had noticed and things that I heard throughout the community that wanted to address. But I also wanted to mention first and foremost that the prospective developer will be providing counsel with a presentation at our next council meeting on February second. Couple of other things. So the project, I mentioned last time that the, the need for workforce housing has been identified in the community. But I wanted to clarify that a couple of the groups that have participated in this discussion didn't have any particular hand in this specific proposal. That's the Workforce Housing Summit and the Workforce Housing Coalition. They helped the city identify what the challenge was, but did not participate in this specific proposal for consideration for the council. We had a couple of things here, the timeline I wanted to go through real quick. As I mentioned the first time back on January fifth, this is the first step in a very, very long process that will have multiple opportunities for public comment. A couple of the steps that I wanted to go through. We have the legislative actions and those are actions that are going to be taken by the council. And I won't presume to know what those are at this point, but the steps include the surplusing of the subject property. They are, next one would be the purchase and sale agreement with the prospective developer and the development agreement. Now, those can all occur at the, on the same council meeting at the same night. But they are three separate public hearings. So there's opportunities to comment for all three. And then after that, assuming the project moves forward, there are multiple steps after that. The first would be a pre-submitting conference with our staff and with fire department and with other service providers such as the school district would be invited. PUD would be invited so that they can all outline what the requirements are for the developer. So the developer knows what is, what's happening. You know, what, what is going to be required in order to get this thing complete? Next step after that, usually after several months is the submission of the first permit application. That's a planned unit development in this case would be a PUD. But it also includes things like environmental studies. Jason, during his presentation earlier, talked about critical areas and our critical areas ordinances. And those environmental studies will have to address what the, what the impacts are and what the mitigation points are. If there are any. Or, you know, if they're too extensive, then the development doesn't necessarily have to go forward. And that's, that's the developer's call. Part of that with the environmental study is a document called a SEPA and that accompanies virtually every land use action. Not everyone, but virtually everyone in the state of Washington. And that is a checklist. It's SEPA stands for State Environmental Policy Act. And that's a checklist that the development community or the city or whoever the proponent of the project is has to go through in order to identify potential issues. Some of those, that includes traffic and includes light and glare and includes impacts to schools. It includes impacts to wetlands. It includes, you know, basically everything that you can think of. Environmentally related. After that, that, that checklist is submitted to us. We take a look at that as the, the review agency. And then we issue a determination on what that, what that SEPA tells us. And then that draft determination is circulated to all the state agencies and local interested parties, and that would include the county DOT is a state agency, but they would get one regardless. Anybody that is a party of record. Anybody that is a party of record as part of the SEPA process. And that is available for public comment for anyone that would like to comment on that document. Those comments, if substantive, have to be addressed as part of the approval process. After that, there is a hearing scheduled with the hearings examiner, which is basically an administrative law judge. And the hearings examiner takes public comment, offers the opportunity for that. And listens to the development proposal and make sure the development proposal complies with all laws in the city. And then the hearings examiner will issue his decision or her decision, assuming it is not, assuming it is an approval of the proposal, that decision will also come with conditions attached. And those conditions can run into the hundreds depending on what it is, depending on what the proposal is, what it affects. Then the, the developer can apply for fill-in grade permits. You know, excavating work, basically site clearing, that kind of thing. That also goes through a review process with our engineering department with Public Works. And then all the public amenities are constructed at that point. All the roads, all the sewer lines, all the water lines are put in place. Only at that point can the developer then apply for what's called final plat. And final plat is what actually creates the lots that homes will be built on. That process takes a significant amount of time. But you review everything from lot closure reports to the surveyor, to making sure the roads were installed according to our standards, as Jay gave you a presentation about before. To making sure the water lines are connected appropriately, making sure the sewer lines are connected appropriately and that they're flowing the way that they were designed to flow by the civil engineer. And assuming the final plat is approved, at that point, you can then apply for a building permit to build a home. This is an incredibly long process with many, many opportunities for public involvement and engagement. And I just wanted to outline that because I think there was some confusion surrounding what that process was. Other thing I wanted to mention, we did advertise this, although I do recognize that we advertised it between, in December, between the holidays. So there's definitely some potential there for confusion or people missing it. So we have slowed this process down to make sure that we get appropriate public involvement. And I think several council members made the point tonight that, you know, the phone is open. Everybody that's called me, that I've talked to, everybody that has emailed me, I've tried to answer all their questions and let them know if they have any more, if I wasn't clear enough to let me know and I'll, I'll try again. Let's see, what else here? So I did see a couple of things that these were mobile homes as being proposed. They're not. They are factory-built homes and that's, there's this significant difference there. What we're doing as we speak and will be up later this week is creating a frequently asked questions component to our public involvement process. With that, frequently asked questions, those will be a couple of things. One of those will be a video to explain exactly what a factory-built home is. Basically, if you watch the video, it's a stick-built home that's just not built on site. They're modular pieces that are brought in. The homes that are proposed will all be eligible for conventional 30-year mortgages. They're on foundations. There's not much of a difference between this type of construction and a stick-built home. Other than levels of customization, but that's pretty much what, what that is. And finally, I wanted to touch on a couple of the community amenities. The Huff and Puff Trail is not going away. It's not proposed to go away. It'll be in fact enhanced a little bit and the developer has offered and agreed to do that. The Disc Golf Course is also not going away. That is an amenity that we want to keep and think it's valuable to the community and there's no way that we would agree to, to get rid of that. The multimodal trail along Brockdale on the east side of where this proposal is is also not going away. That will be enhanced and rebuilt as part of this development. So all three of those things are not, not anything that's going to be lost as part of this, part of this development. And then lastly, just touch on the Growth Management Act itself, and that's the law that we plan under and develop under in, in Mason County along with about half the other counties in the state. There are planning goals associated with the Growth Management Act. If anybody wants to take a look at that and look at it specifically, I'm not going to go through all 13. But the citation is RCW 3670A020. And in that citation, there is, as I said, 13 goals and the the language itself makes clear that they are in no particular order and one is not more important than any other. But the one that I wanted to touch on and mention tonight is urban growth and we encourage development in urban areas. So that, one of the reasons the Growth Management Act exists is to make sure that development takes place in urban areas and doesn't sprawl. The area that we are talking about for this proposal is in the city limits. That is where urban development is supposed to occur. In order to preserve areas in the county outside of cities where preservation of our natural assets is, takes a higher level of protection. It's why you don't have urban level densities generally out in the county. There are some other exceptions to that, but that gets a little bit too far in the weeds for this discussion. But with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. I do have some questions from folks in the community that have emailed me that after we have any comment tonight or questions, I'll be happy to go through those as well.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I do have someone who would like to make a public comment.
All right.
Point of order, are we taking questions from the council at this time? Sorry, just a quick question. Jeff, could you please, if you have the information available, could you tell us about the zoning on this particular parcel of land?
Sure, so you can probably see a little bit blurry behind me, but there's a zoning map of the city on my wall right behind. What that is, what that area is designated is for neighborhood residential. That doesn't mean it has to be used for that. That's, that, that's what the current zoning is.
And to your knowledge, that's been in place since forever?
Well, I, I won't go that far. I will say it was confirmed by the council the last time the conference and plan was re- reauthorized or re-adopted in.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else on the council? All right, I see, who did you have, Donna? Was it Mr. Mortensen?
No, I have Patricia McCoy.
Patricia McCoy.
Are you still there, Trish?
I'm here. Okay, my name's Trish McCoy. I work at Mountain View. I've been the Shelton School District for 24 years. I want to start out with an apology. Apparently I offended some people by calling the proposed development low-income housing. I heard it presented as housing within an income band below the median income for this community. Because I heard it based on income lower than the median income, I called it low-income housing, so I apologize for that. And looking around the country at any type of housing projects where people are clumped together because of income, race, ethnicity, et cetera, it does not seem to work. I believe everyone's intentions are very sincere. But putting a certain group of people because of any classification type together in a group is called segregation. You are segregating people according to their income. After researching housing developments around the US over a period of time where lower-income rentals are interspersed with market-rate homes, research shows more success. The rental homes are then a stepping stone toward homeownership. The watershed, 90 acres, is our last major open space in the city of Shelton, used for the enjoyment of all people. When I think of New York Central Park, which is 842.6 acres, I think of the people that fought to save their pristine outdoor space within the city even though they desperately needed affordable housing. Can you imagine how the longtime New Yorkers would feel if they were told that 4,000 workforce homes were going to be jammed into part of their last large open green space, Central Park? These planned homes are factory-built homes with no garages, street parking, and would empty onto already really busy streets. One of the selling points is that the Huff and Puff and the Disc Golf would be enhanced. They don't need any enhancement. They're perfect in the natural setting as they are. Our watershed is great. We love it the way it is. There are so many areas that we can look at developing where we can build affordable housing, both market rate and rental throughout our city. One final comment. Does Shelton really need 400 rental homes in this community? I know we need market-rate housing. I know we need some rental homes. But 400 for the city of Shelton, really? Is it really worth losing our last large open green space in the city of Shelton that will never be replaced? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Patricia. Who's next, Donna?
Dave Mortensen is next. And Dave, I didn't mention this to Trish because I think she knew already, but you have three minutes to make your public comment.
Okay, first of all, I'm, I'm a longtime educator in Shelton, over 30 years. I'm retired now. But I have a number of questions. I'm going to address it via questions. How long are these negotiations, negotiations been going on? Until I hear, you know, I see it. You said it was advertised in December to the public. But the first I heard of it was when I saw it in the journal. I think the development is short-sighted. Why are we working with an out-of-state developer? Okay, why are we not working if we, if this were to go forward, why not work with our local builders? All our money is being sent out of state. The rents would go out of state to no, you know, benefit to the city of Shelton. Is it wise to concentrate that many low-income homes all in one location? In my experience with lower-income rentals is that tenants don't take care of their property. And will it become the Shelton slum? I think we would become the low-income homes to many people in Olympia. That means people that are working in Olympia, they have kids, then you got a whole bunch of latchkey kids with nothing to do. Has anybody gone and looked at the development this company has done in the short time term and in the long term? How have they fared out? How about the impact to schools? Now you addressed that, that there, that will be addressed, hospitals and traffic. And how can the development happen in this area that I have always been told, and I've been a lifelong resident of Shelton? I've always been told that this was an aquifer recharge area and nothing will ever be built on it. I'm done.
Thank you, Dave. Donna, do we have someone else?
Yes, I can see Dean McCoy has his hand raised. And Dean, you also have three minutes.
Thank you. I'm going to leave my picture off so I don't break up on here. A couple of things I still want to comment on this, and the first thing I want to say is that I hate to see us give away, you know, the public's last large open space inside of a city size of Shelton. I know previously it was mentioned this, you know, 20 years from now, people are going to look back and go, wow, we had an opportunity here as a crown jewel as an open space for all members of our community in here. So I, and once we get rid of this, the city will never be able to afford to buy some outlying area to have large open space like this. We know, I mean, I can't foresee that happening. Also, it's already mentioned once, but the Huff and Puff and the Disc Golf don't need improvements. Bottom line is they're great how they are. They're heavily used for a reason. I don't know how you could, I guess you put any bark on it, be about all you can do. Also, Mr. Mortensen mentioned the long-term effects. I'd love to see, you know, like I said, 20 years from now, you're going to look back and people are going to look at you, you know, counsel and go, wow, they made the right decision here. This is open space out here that we kept. We're glad we did that. And you already mentioned the outside sources. The other thing I want to bring up is, you know, Bremerton, Bellingham and Olympia were in similar situations in the 80s. Two of those cities worked their way out of having, or worked their way into a positive downtown core. And that would be Bellingham and Bremerton. And you can see the effects on what Olympia has when you cater to a certain group and you keep market-rate people out. The other thing is, you know, this is a discriminatory building. I cannot live in that neighborhood if it's built as proposed. Because supposedly I make too much money, eight, more than 80% of the poverty rate or the median rate. So I'm already discriminating against, it's a modern-day redlining that's taking place. So, but my main emphasis before I run out of time is think about this open space and it's, it's going to be a crown jewel in Shelton in 20 or 25 years and will never replace it. And environmentally, I would like to keep this. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dean. I see a hand up, Pam Stevens.
I see Pam Stevens and I can also see Mike Fox. So I don't know who was next.
Whoever's first. Mike, were you up first?
I'm happy to go or I'm happy to wait.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, Mike Fox. I don't even want to talk about the housing thing. I want to talk about something that I've heard everybody talk about and that's transparency. And I just want to emphasize that as far as I am concerned and as far as I have been able to find and I've spent a lot of time researching this since we found this was happening a couple of weeks ago. There has been no transparency to the public in this. Nobody from the Workforce Housing Task Force that supposedly is driving this knew about this. I have talked to Superintendent Apostle. The school district was not informed that this was even a possibility. His statement to me was if this happens, it will be devastating to the school district. You're talking about shoving 400 houses into a small area. We just spent $67 million to the community to improve the schools and make enough space for the existing students that we have. There has been no discussion inside this development agreement. It says the city has not identified a use for this property. And that's because there has been no attempt or effort to find or see what the community wants for this piece of property. I think you've heard, you know, everybody who spoke on this so far. It's, it's not, it's the lack of transparency. A backdoor deal with a developer who's out of state, all the money is going to go out of state. There is nothing that is going to keep all 400 of these houses from having people from Olympia because the rents are higher in Olympia, come over here, rent the houses, and they're still going to drive to Olympia. So all we're going to do is exasperate the problem we already have of being a, a, a community where 60 or 70% of the people go out of county. So I just really encourage all of you on the council to step back from this and to engage the community to find out first, before we even start talking about housing, what does a community want to see happen to a piece of property that has been, the city bought in 1943? It's been watershed and open space ever since. There are signs on the property currently that say, take care of your open space. This is the city watershed. I think first, the, the council needs to first find out what the desire of the Shelton community actually is before you commit the city to a development agreement that is binding on the city, that has a whole bunch of problems. before you commit the city to a development agreement that is binding on the city, um, that has a whole bunch of problems. If, if, if I was playing Monopoly, I would love to have somebody hand me this agreement as a developer, um, that I'm not necessarily committed to pay anything upfront. Um, it, it just goes on and on, but anyway, I would really encourage you guys to first engage the community to find out what the community wants to see happen to this piece of property.
Hey, Mike.
Before you commit to, um, signing any development agreement. Thank you. Appreciate it very much.
All right, thank you, Mike.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, now we have Pam Stevens, and Pam, you also have three minutes.
Okay, thank you. Can you hear me? Okay, so I, I am Pam Stevens. I've lived in Shelton since nineteen ninety-nine, and, uh, while I don't have a presence in the community or connections, I don't have a business in the community or resources, uh, like some of, like, some who have spoken out do. I just live in the community, but I do think that I have a unique point of view, and that is that I live directly across the street from where this would go. I live in Springfield Park. And I actually support this plan. And even though it will change the view that's out my front door, it will change the traffic that I see every day. I see a huge need for this within the community. The housing is a hard to find. And I've, now that I've raised my children here, I have a couple of teenagers, but I have two young adult boys who are working in Mason County. They work for a business that's here locally. They work locally in the county, and there's nowhere for them to live. There's, there are six months to a year waiting list on apartments. Their rentals are, like, whether they're duplexes or homes, there's just nothing. And so then they could go move to Olympia, but then they would need to commute into Shelton, which just isn't logical. So I see personally both sides of the, of the situation. I live where it will directly affect me, but I also have young adults in my life who want to live in Shelton and want to work in Shelton, and there's nowhere for them to go. So I just wanted to speak with the council tonight and let you guys know that I support this. I support your efforts. It's desperately needed in the community, and I'm grateful that you guys are looking for options.
Thank you, Pam. Donna?
Let me look here, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
I don't see anyone else with their hand raised. Oh, wait, wait. I see someone. Cindy Mortensen.
Cindy Mortensen.
Cindy, you're on mute, and once you begin, you have three minutes.
Cindy, can you?
Thank you. It, sorry, we have two computers next to each other. Um, a couple of things. I've been listening to the comments, and I really appreciate all of the comments and brought to my attention. I worked at the hospital for twenty-five years, and, um, I'm concerned about the impact that this may have even on the healthcare system. Um, four hundred people is quite a few, um, especially for housing development. And the other thing is the cycle social impact that this may have on children. Um, Trish brought up the fact that it's discriminatory to put everybody in a lump area. And how does that impact our children in the community, um, in the schools when we don't want to call this low-income housing, but we know that people live in this community, this development have lower income? And will that affect these children, and will they be teased and labeled as opposed to dispersing, um, lower rent or, um, lower-cost housing throughout the community where it's kind of an equal opportunity? And I thi- I just think that's something that we really need to be thinking about, um, for our public. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else, Donna?
No, there isn't, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thanks, everyone, for your comments.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, uh, just address a couple of questions, and then I have received, uh, a couple of emails that I wanted to, uh, to make sure the council was aware of. Um, let me turn my volume up here. All right, so, uh, I did receive an email, um, Monday morning, uh, from, uh, resident Ms. Johnson. Uh, and she had a couple of questions, and I'd just like to kind of go through those and answer the ones that I can. Uh, what's the definition of utility land? So the definition of utility land is basically, uh, it's owned by one of the utility funds. So in this instance, uh, the water fund owns it, and, um, that's, uh, that's basically what utility land is. If, uh, the sewer fund owned a piece of property, it would be, uh, it would be a utility land, uh, it would be utility land as well. Uh, so how does Equity Plus define the type of housing they will be putting up? Uh, modular housing, factory-built housing, I think I went through that a little bit earlier. Equity Plus, there would be four to six homes per acre, some of the construction, we count houses or condos, potentially. But the number of, uh, same, of homes won't go up. It'll be the same number of homes if, uh, townhomes or, um, uh, condos go up. It would just increase the amount of green space on the property. That would be the only change. Uh, will the homes ever be available for sale? So that would be, uh, up to Equity Plus. Uh, could be sold, as I mentioned earlier, and they're eligible for, um, uh, conventional thirty-year mortgages. So that's possible, but we will have a covenant on the property, um, assuming this moves forward, that will require that they stay, uh, affordable housing for a period, or workforce housing for a period of, I believe it's fifteen years, uh, although there is a potential to keep that for longer. Who's responsible for landscaping and maintenance? That would be the management company, and that's Equity Plus. They are responsible for the property and for maintaining that property. Uh, responsible for renting and eviction, evictions, that's also Equity Plus. Uh, where is Equity Plus's business located? Um, headquartered, I believe, in Virginia, uh, but one of the other questions we are denied was, there are other projects. Uh, there, they have projects in, in various stages, both complete and operating and currently under construction, uh, from Washington DC to Raleigh, North Carolina, to Petersburg, Virginia, to, um, although there was one other one, Washington DC. Uh, so they have projects, many projects that, uh, we have taken a look at. Not personal, because I don't want to get on a plane more than just about anybody else does, I'm sure. Uh, but, uh, we've seen, uh, what the outcome of those are. Based on Equity Plus's research concerning, concerning the need for four-bedroom housing, housing, uh, how many of the four hundred homes would be four bedrooms? Uh, that I can't answer. That's, uh, up to Equity Plus to answer based on their, uh, investment mix and what they see the need for here. Will they be single-family dwellings? Yes, all of them will be. Um, if, will there be a fence around the development? So yes, there will be along Rockdale, needed for sound absorption as well as, uh, uh, beautification of the community. Not a bio fence. Uh, we'll, uh, make sure it's something nice, but these are all elements of what goes into planning and approving the permit that I mentioned earlier when, uh, preliminary plats submitted. Uh, how does underground water move across the development again? Uh, something that they'll take a look at as part of the critical areas ordinance. Will there be only one road accessing the development? We will require to, if I, if I took a look at, um, or listened to our public works director, uh, discuss the number of entrance and exits for, uh, developments according to the fire code. There'll have to be a minimum of two. Couple of the others, uh, what happens if the road cannot be built over the extensive wetlands? So in that case, we would, uh, according to the language in the agreement now, we would, uh, do our best to facilitate, uh, an additional entrance. That does not mean, uh, that an entrance will come from, uh, the north. Uh, that means it'll come from the existing development immediately west or a little bit south, west and south of where it is, but that's not preferred. Seems like an environmental impact study should be done before the city signs the development agreement. Uh, not necessarily. That is, uh, one of the things that I talked about with the SEPA, uh, the State Environmental Policy Act document. Uh, depending on what the determination is, that will tell us whether an environmental impact statement is necessary. And a couple of the other ones, uh, there was a question about the critical aquifer recharge area. Uh, critical lock for recharge areas exist, uh, throughout Western Washington. Uh, there are brand-new neighborhoods built on them every day. There are a couple of prohibi- prohibitions, uh, in there. One of those is that, uh, in the, in our development code, uh, not necessarily in the state, revised code of Washington or the, uh, Washington Administrative Code. In our development code, uh, there are prohibited more than three, uh, units per acre if they are on private septic systems. These are not proposed to be on septic system. Uh, these propose to be on municipal sewer, so there is no prohibition against that, uh, against, uh, development for that, uh, that particular type of development. There's other things, like you can't put, um, manufacturing facilities on top of it, but that's not because of the development itself. It's because of what that type of development produces. Uh, and a few other things, if anybody'd like to take a look at that, that's in Shelton Municipal Code, Chapter twenty-one point six-six. And, uh, anyone who's, um, can take a look at that, or I'd be happy to send you a link if you email it to, or email me, and I'll, I'll reply back. And then the last one was, um, uh, a lady would like to know if, uh, the council believes the proposed project is in the best long-term interest of the city, uh, or should we consider a more traditional housing development with a local builder? Uh, I think that, um, you know, you can answer, uh, that this evening, or you could answer it at a future public hearing. Uh, now, right now, uh, since we have so many people on the line, I think it is important to add that tentatively, uh, we are scheduled, uh, have, scheduled to have a meeting on March sixteenth at your regularly scheduled council meeting. Uh, that's not set in stone yet. That's just in pencil. Um, but I wanted to let everybody know that now, especially because we have so many people participating. Uh, but we will, uh, make sure that notice gets out before that happens. So, uh, if council has any further questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Hey, Jeff, can you detail, uh, Jeff, can you detail, um, we, we had talked on, I believe, Friday about, uh, one of the comments just a few ago was about the money's gonna be going out of state. Can you talk about the fact that, uh, materials and the construction of which is all happening in-state locally?
Yeah, so it, uh, it doesn't make any financial sense for a developer, uh, to, uh, hire, um, you know, out-of-state subcontractors or, uh, purchase out-of-state materials and have them transported here, whether it's by truck, train, or anything else, uh, unless it's a very specialty project. That's not the case here. These are, uh, these are homes that are built, same type are built all across the country, except, uh, in probably Florida, really good hurricanes, and you don't necessarily want any type of stick-built structure there. Uh, but, um, you know, all local, uh, well, not all local. You know, the, the foreman, uh, superintendent of the project, I'm sure will be part of the company, so that individual will be local. But, uh, financially, it just doesn't make any, any sense for, um, a developer to, uh, bring in out-of-state folks to do that. Also, they'll have to be folks here on the ground every day doing, as I mentioned, when we were talking about the questions that I had received, um, how do you maintain the development, all those types of things? Those are all, uh, things that'll be generated here.
The other question I had, uh, that is seemingly kind of keeps coming up about, you know, the perceptions that the neighborhood is gonna look bad, um, you know, in, in twenty years. Um, I would say, i- i- and, and you could detail this maybe further too, is, um, they still have to build the homes, construct the homes, and maintain the, the planned unit development in accordance with our city municipal code, as well as our city design standards, um, as well as the fact that because we are implementing some of these steps, we don't, so that is obviously a common goal, right? We do not want deteriorating construction in twenty-five years. We want long-lasting, stiff-built homes. I think everybody here agrees with that. Can, can you detail a little bit more about, about that process and, and what that might look like, um, as we get to that, get to that point? Like, how are we going to prevent, uh, the investment from becoming, um, I think you get where I'm going with that.
Yeah, so, uh, our code enforcement, one of the things that council, uh, wanted me to focus on when I first got here was, uh, code enforcement within, uh, within our city, to make sure that things are maintained. And that's been a priority for me. It's been a priority for our police department and for our code enforcement officer. And, um, I hope, uh, that over the last eighteen months or so, people have noticed a difference. There are, uh, several significant issues that we have, um, uh, done our best to mitigate, uh, early and quickly and just, uh, you know, help people. The, the, the thing about, uh, code enforcement is it's not, you know, a carrot in a state well. It's not a, uh, you will do this approach, and no, we're not going out and measuring everybody's grass with a ruler to see if it's, you know, an inch too tall or anything like that. It's, uh, making things, um, making sure things are done to the benefit of the community and doing it through mostly education. You know, just letting people know, we'll help you with this. One of the things that the city did last year was the cleanup days, where we, uh, we, we helped people, uh, take care of their property and, and get it up to, uh, get it up to code requirements, but it's really about, uh, education. And when you're dealing with a corporate entity like this, uh, generally, compliance is much easier to achieve for a couple of reasons. One, they want to be able to rent these places, and you're not gonna be able to, uh, rent these single-family homes if the neighborhood doesn't look appropriate, uh, or look, uh, look nice. And two, uh, they don't want to, um, uh, have to deal with, uh, the potential for fines going to court if they're not, keeping up the appearance of their property according to city standard.
My last comment, and I will defer to the group, sorry, um, something that hits me right in the heart, punches you in the gut. We've had, we've been battling the, um, COVID-nineteen response. Prior to that, um, we had been researching this topic of affordable housing, workforce housing. And I recall, um, I recall a statement from, uh, I believe, an educator at Choice High School talking about how many students in the Shelton School District are homeless. Um, the number is pretty high. It's, it's unacceptable. One is too many. When COVID-nineteen struck, many students don't have access to high-speed internet, access to ten classes, which is why we're so motivated to get kids back in the classroom. We understand the emotional, physical strain that puts on them. As a parent of two children, I would do anything I possibly could to ensure my kids always have a roof over their head, and it's in a safe place. Man, that hurt. That hurt, and, um, yeah, when ten percent of the student population in Shelton School District potentially is, is homeless, I am incredibly motivated to put a roof over their head.
All right, thank you, Joe.
Mr. Mayor, if I can also.
Donna, who was it?
It's Megan.
Oh, hi, Megan.
Hi there. So, little, little bit more about me, everyone. Um, I'm forty-two years old. I've lived in Shelton for fifteen years. Um, I grew up in Elma, and when I was fifteen years old, I found myself homeless. Um, thankfully, I have a really high hope score and a little bit of will, and found some folks that helped me along a pathway. Um, but I didn't receive my GED until I was twenty-five years old. I worked food and beverage for twelve years, uh, working my way up to be able to afford a home. Um, and twenty-five years old, I was hit in a head-on collision, um, right there above Aggett Road. You all see the cross still at the top of that hill, right before Pickering, before you get to the power station. I was, uh, going to school full-time and working full-time, and I broke both my feet, both my legs, and I didn't know what to do. I was, uh, going to school full-time and working full-time and I broke both my feet, both my legs, and I didn't know what to do. But I had a goal, and that goal was to buy a house by the time I was thirty years old. And I didn't know where I was going to be able to do that. At the time, I was living in Thurston County, you know, and I was working there. And my husband and I looked at each other and we said, you know what? Let's take a look at Shelton. We really love the Olympic Mountains. We really love this, this, you know, Timbertown feel. You know, I, I, I also grew up in Elma for quite a while when I was a kid. My dad was the labor, um, leader here for our mill folks for thirty years and helped make sure that our working people had a living wage to buy their homes here. So, again, going back at the age of twenty-eight years old, I had the opportunity to buy a home, and it was here in Shelton, Washington. This home of mine is a mill home. It was a mill home that was cut out downtown, and it was brought up here on Eleanor Avenue. And my husband and I have lovingly redone this home little bit by little bit. We still got yard work to do, you know? Um, but I'm proud of this town. And it's become, you know, y'all are my neighbors, you know? I don't have kids, you know, I, I admit that. I don't, you know, I'm not going to have kids, but this community is my family. You know, and I don't have direct connectivity with all of you, but you all did afford me three years ago to go through a leadership group called the Rural Development Initiatives. You all helped a lot of us do that over the last three years. And part of the work that we talked about was workforce housing and what we needed in this town and how to take care of each other. Now, this is an opportunity for all of us. Thirty years ago, we made the decision that that space up there was going to be urban development when we chose the place of Walmart in our community, the very first Walmart in the west side of Washington State, the very first Walmart in Washington State entirely. We decided that this was an urban growth area. Now, what that did to our downtown, and when my memories of sitting in Needa's as a little girl while my dad was taking care of the workers, eating a hamburger and having a shake and seeing how downtown thrived, it was much a different time then. And we have an opportunity together to rethink about how we take care of each other and how we take care of the workers here. Without Shelton, without all of you, I would have no hope. I would have not been able to buy a home fifteen years ago. I would not have pride in my community, in this community up here on Hillcrest. I'm, shoot, I'm on, um, Hill, next to Hillcrest and I'm on one of the Platts over here, Jeff. I can't remember. This is, this is, this is a community of working families. We're a community of combined folks. Some of us have a little bit more money than others. Some of us speak another language. Bottom line is, we came together and we're taking care of each other. We're making sure that we're improving each other's homes. You know, and so those are my comments to you all. We do have a lot of hope and opportunity here. This is a space where we can revision our community in our downtown. We have a ton of folks who have the potential to open businesses in our storefronts as we think about those folks who aren't taking care of, you know, the, or going up to the Huff and Puff and disc golfing, all of, trust me, I got a, but I got a crew of folks that come in from Olympia all the time to use that trail. My nephew sells the discs at his shop on the west side. So, you know what? We got those, we got those here too, but let, let's take advantage of the opportunity of taking care of everybody, you know, and taking care of each other. And let's recognize the choices that we made thirty years ago. And let's, let's move forward and move this community forward, because, uh, and I'll remind everyone, when I moved here fifteen years ago, and we started about talking, you know, a lot deeper about next generations and how we were going to do urban growth together. And the complete shutdown of conversations of young people in this community that would like to grow it in a sustainable way was ridiculous. We have an opportunity together. A lot of you have this opportunity too. I had this opportunity. It's our job to continue this forward. So, those are my comments, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, uh, we're coming up on eight o'clock, and, uh, I think there needs to be a motion by council to extend the meeting, but I would, uh, would also recommend maybe a five or ten-minute, uh, five or ten-minute break, and then we can. Again, this will be talked about, uh, talked about again and again, so I'm sure we'll continue the conversation, uh, next on February second.
I move that we extend the meeting another hour, Jeff?
I think that should be more than enough.
Second.
Till eight PM.
We have a motion in a second.
Till, till nine PM.
Uh, nine PM, excuse me.
Nine PM.
Yes.
We have a motion and a second to extend the meeting until nine PM. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Jeff, will you be answering another question after the break?
Uh, I can, or I can answer them, uh, answer them individually. Like I said, you know, folks, give me, give me a call.
No, I had a, a, a couple of questions.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. A minute if you want to take the break.
Sure. Either one, it's up to, uh, up to the mayor. I can, go ahead.
If you can take a couple of questions, let's do it right now.
Yep.
Oh, I was just going to ask you, besides the providing well-needed rental homes in Shelton that could lead to stepping stone to homeownership, what are the other benefits that a project like this could provide to the city, you know?
Sure.
Maybe like, uh, if we add four hundred homes to our utilities, maybe rates don't have to go up so much down the road, stuff like that.
Yeah. So a couple of benefits, uh, that I'll mention, and these aren't exhaustive, but there are a couple of the ones that I wanted to highlight. Um, first, uh, you mentioned utilities. So, uh, our capital costs for utilities, and I'm talking about things like, uh, our sewer treatment plant. Uh, that's relatively fixed, uh, at this point. Um, you know, it may go up and down a little bit, but we're certainly not going to, uh, borrow another sixty million dollars or whatever it was to, uh, to upgrade the treatment plant. So what that means in effect is with four hundred additional connections, uh, we'll be able to keep the cost, uh, the same or potentially even lower a little bit. I can't guarantee that. But if you spread out the cost over four hundred more connections, you can see how that, uh, that works to keep the cost contained. Um, secondly, it's very similar principle to your, uh, to your property taxes. The city collects a, a fixed amount. We know what we're going to collect based on the mileage rate. Uh, so if you're spreading out the costs, uh, in the city, uh, by an additional four hundred, um, homes, it's going to cost, you know, the, you can see how that would work as well. Next, two other, uh, pieces, uh, that I wanted to mention, economic development being one. When a business is looking to locate in an area, particularly a retail business, uh, you want to look at the number of people that might consume your, the products that you're selling, uh, or the service that you're providing in an area around where you're going to locate your business. Uh, additional rooftops, additional people in four hundred additional rooftops are going to make this area more attractive to locate a business, a retail business. The same is true, uh, slightly different dynamic for industrials, uh, scale businesses. Um, if you're looking to locate an industrial-scale business, uh, you know, a factory, you know, whatever it happens to be. Uh, you're going to want to locate in an area that has a workforce that will, that is available to come work for you in a short distance. Uh, you don't want your workforce driving from an hour away if you can avoid it. All other things being equal, uh, businesses, uh, large industrial businesses are going to look to locate an area that has an available workforce to them. Um, there, there are, you know, different considerations for that. If you have something unique, uh, about, uh, about your area that the business absolutely needs. And I used, I was talking to somebody earlier and I used the example of the semiconductor business. They need a, uh, bedrock that is very stable, so when they're constructing their, um, constructing semiconductors or the, the chips, uh, they have to have that type of bedrock. It makes their capital investment much less. They don't have to sink peers and all kinds of other things. So if you have something like that, you can, uh, attract those type of businesses regardless of whether you have a workforce, um, nearby. If you don't, and we don't, as far as I'm aware, have something like that that's unique, um, you have to have a workforce nearby and that is, uh, that isn't a tractor to, uh, large-scale businesses. Some of the benefits. There are, uh, there are, you know, many others, but those are the highlights.
Thank you.
All right, Jeff, I, I would really like to take the, uh, comment from this man named Gary. So Donna, want to invite him on?
Mr. Mayor, who are you speaking of? I only see James Bode with his hand up. I don't see.
I saw this man named Gary raise his hand a little while ago.
Oh, I see. I see him.
He doesn't have his last name up there.
Okay, Gary, can you unmute yourself and give me your first and last name, and then you will have three minutes for your comment. You have to unmute yourself.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, uh, I had some questions only because of.
Excuse me, Gary?
My name is Gary Miser.
Miser? M-I-S-E-R?
M-I-N-E-R.
M-I-N-G-R. Okay, you have three minutes, sir.
All right, I don't think that long. I had a couple of questions just on the differences between the proposal and what was in the proposed agreement. Is, is it sixty percent or is it eighty percent of the median income? Because one says sixty percent, one says eighty percent. And in the verbal presentation, he said sixty percent.
So we can answer that after you're done with your comment. Once you're all done, I'll answer the question.
All right. One other question that I had was that this property belongs to quote-unquote the water department. Is the money that's derived from either selling or from this project, does it go directly to the water department and not available for the general fund? In other words, can you borrow money to take care of, uh, discretions of different sorts from other departments? Um, just if it was a direct benefit to the water department, I would have a little bit less concern because the sewer department's got a real problem right now. Okay. One other question that I have is, does payments really made as long as fifty percent of the cash available by the developer? Um, or what if he doesn't have enough to make a full payment? Do you guys take on the, the role of a bank and, uh, if you already got money issues that you're trying to address now, how would you solve this? I didn't understand where, it sounds more like you're taking far more of a risk than they are. Um, and, and I didn't see where, I thought it said if there was a conflict between municipal code and what you've got within this agreement, the agreement would take priority. All right, so you, you can't hold them to your code if you've already been in on freedom in your agreement. So I'm, I don't understand why that was put in there. Uh, so, but anyways, I just think there's areas where the, the city doesn't have accountability when it should. Uh, it, it says that the, the developer can sell to another entity without your having your approval. I don't understand that. If they owe you money. Uh, just, and it's just a bunch of stuff here that kind of says that there's a lot more work before that agreement should be agreed on between you and the developer. That's my opinion. Just one person. I got you.
Thank you, Gary. Jeff, you want to comment on some of that?
Sure. So, uh, the sixty to eighty percent, so basically across the development, uh, it has to average, uh, sixty percent of, uh, AMI, area median income. So eighty percent is the high. So you can't, uh, um, nobody that makes more than eighty percent of, uh, the area median income, uh, would be eligible to move in. But you can rent some to, uh, one of these homes to somebody that makes eighty percent, and then you can rent, uh, the home to somebody that makes forty percent and your average is sixty. But typically, you're, you know, in between forty-five, or, sorry, fifty-five and, uh, uh, sixty-five is where, uh, how you meet that average. So sixty is the average requirement, not the max. Uh, on, uh, the, the, uh, water department, so because it's owned by the water fund, uh, it would benefit the water department as it stands. And one of the things we were looking at, if, uh, people were, um, participating with us earlier in the year, we're talking about the advanced metering infrastructure, uh, that we want to install around the city to make, um, basically the, the, uh, billing and everything more efficient, so we won't have, uh, issues with uh, misreads and those kind of things. Everything comes back to, uh, the computer system here and people will be able to check online, uh, what their water usage is. Uh, that's part of it. We would like to use some of the funds to, uh, to do that. The, uh, third point was, uh, regarding the, the structure, the financial structure. So, one of the things we negotiated in the, the version of the agreement that's public is that a, a minimum of five hundred dollars for each rental unit, uh, accrues to the city per year. Um, so, uh, we had a minimum floor. That's something that, uh, that frankly, we had to have uh, in order for it to be paid off. One of the other things that I've seen is the property is, uh, only worth four hundred and fifty thousand. So, uh, that's the assessed value. Uh, because it, uh, um, uh, did see a tax assessed value because it's owned by the city, basically. And because our use for it at the moment is, uh, is not developed. Um, we think, and this is, uh, just a guess, I don't want anybody holding me to it, but it's a, it's a educated guess that, uh, acres, uh, one acre within the size of the city is worth about thirty thousand undeveloped. Uh, so assuming that, that property that we're talking about is worth about two point four million. Uh, so that's kind of the, uh, assumption that we're operating under. That'll be validated and substantiated by a professional appraiser. Um, but that's kind of, uh, about the number that we're looking at, uh, as far as the sales price. Um, and I, I think I hit all those.
All right. Thank you much, Jeff. Uh, I see James got his hand up. We'll take one more before a break.
Fantastic. I'll be really quick. Um, I more have a request because I've heard it from multiple people. I've received emails and calls of there are lots of investors out there that would be willing to take this on. I would request that you have them contact us. This isn't a done deal. If somebody came in tomorrow and offered us millions of dollars for that lot and they were going to keep it as it is or make it a park or only put beautiful homes in there to sell, let's talk to them. They're, they're not knocking on our door to, to make this happen though. So if, if you know a developer that has pockets that can come in and buy that property outright, or even maybe work a deal with the city and put a better project in there that fits the community better, have them call us. Let's talk about it. And, uh, that's all I'm requesting.
All right. Thank you, Jeff. I mean, James. All right. So, we take about a five-minute break and come back?
Okay. Uh, come back at eight sixteen.
Eight sixteen. Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
So we are recessing from our regular meeting to open a public hearing. Finance Director Aaron Beane.
Before I move on, I just had a couple of, of questions for Jeff on that last topic.
Oh, okay.
Move on. Um, I wanted to ask if, if Jeff, I know you talked about the overall process and all the steps along the way. Could you talk about particularly the immediate next step and if there is an opportunity to adjust the schedule to allow for the question of surplus of the property to take place prior to the development agreement? Um, because that seems to be one of the major sticking points. Um, I'd also like to ask the one the developers invited in for the next presentation. Um, I'd also like to ask the one the developer's invited in for the next presentation, if he can discuss specifically the identification of this as workforce housing, because we've talked a lot about that bracket being forty to eighty in that offset. But even in the workforce housing report that came out from the summit, workforce housing is defined on a national level, at least in most reports that I've seen, it's sixty to a hundred and forty percent. And so we're talking about a very, a very narrow group of those folks. And, and if the developer can talk about the impacts of that to the project. And then lastly, I just wanted to bring forward again, the council's ongoing conversations about the need for a long-term capital facilities plan, so that we are looking at these types of decisions in a thoughtful way. So we are getting to a place where it is community by design rather than default. And I know that's, major steps have been made in that direction. But I think that this project proposal in and of itself underlines the need for us to, to prioritize that as we move towards all these goals that the city has, um, in moving forward, not only as a city and as a council, but as a community to make sure that the decisions that we're making are not only because of an opportunity, but also in light of a long-term plan. So now that I've tossed all of that your way, if you have any, um, remarks or if any of the council members would like to speak to that, I, I would really appreciate any feedback.
So, uh, first, um, let's see, identification as workforce housing. So, uh, idea, uh, identification workforce housing, there are, uh, numbers in what the federal government, which I think may, uh, cause some confusion around this, uh, what they call the low-income housing tax credit, LA, uh, HTC. Uh, that doesn't necessarily mean that it's a low-income project, but it identifies the numbers per state and per, by community. So I can certainly ask the developer to, uh, to answer that. Um, as far as a capital facilities plan and, uh, development code and all those issues, one of the things I was going to highlight during the manager's report tonight, but I can certainly do it now, is our, um, uh, commitment to making sure, as I said, all of the, uh, the, uh, uh, fire code, the building code, the, uh, development code, uh, all match up so that we can identify a path forward, uh, for where we want to go and, uh, make sure that our capital, capital facilities plans meet that vision. That's what they're intended to do. I, and I think there's some inconsistencies in there now, uh, but, um, it's something that we need to correct and that we will be working on this year. We've identified a public involvement plan, uh, that I emailed the council earlier today, uh, outlining kind of the next steps, uh, on, uh, that front uh, and timelines associated with it, that after I, uh, uh, receive feedback from all of you, we'll be publishing and making sure that the community is aware of. Uh, as far as next steps for this particular project, um, as I mentioned, uh, at the beginning, we have the surplus, uh, of the property that council will need to consider. We have the purchase and sale that the council will need to consider, and we have the development agreement that the council needed to consider. Those are first, that, uh, those come first before, uh, any other steps. And assuming council approves those, those, uh, items, uh, then we will move forward into the preliminary plat, the PUD, uh, the CIPA document and consideration of all the, the finer details of what, uh, what this project will, uh, look like.
And city managers, specifically, um, the very next step, my question is, is the, is it feasible for us to look at the surplus of the property prior to the approval of the development agreement itself?
Sure.
A lot of the concern that I've heard surrounding this has to do with the city's use of the property, what the community and the citizens want to see for that, and transparency in that process. So is there an opportunity for us to address the surplus of the land itself prior to addressing this specific project? Because I think that's kind of where we're getting the cart before the horse in some ways. Um, but again, council members, I, I would love for any of you to weigh in on your thoughts regarding that.
So just real quick and then, uh, absolutely, we can do that. There's no, uh, uh, no reason why we can't. And as I mentioned, we have, um, um, tentatively, uh, penciled down March sixteenth. Uh, so that could be consideration of surplus or adjusting the calendar as, uh, council sees fit.
But I have a challenge with the thunder stick. Sorry, somebody else jumping in there?
I, I had my hand up first.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see you. Go ahead.
I can't find my electronic hand, so I was using my regular one. Don't make me break out my tiny hand. I've got one of those too for Zincon. So jokes aside, um, uh, Mr. Mayor Jeff, City Manager Knighton, remind me, when we as a city and community members, um, started taking on the idea of bringing in the YMCA as a community amenity, um, you know, that process was similar to this process, a little, little, not as in-depth, right? Um, now with that process though, there were some studies that had to happen for the Y to choose their location here. And if my memory serves me correctly, there was a housing and workforce, specific housing data that was collected as part of that process. Yes?
I'm not, uh, not familiar with that exact data, uh, but the way that the YMCA project differs from this one specifically is the YMCA project was a lease, uh, of, uh, already existing property and not, uh, didn't have to go through the surplus process or the purchases, the ill grant process. It's slightly different in that regard. Uh, but there is, uh, through the United Way, uh, nationwide, there is a, a document, uh, or a study rather, uh, called ALICE. And ALICE stands for Asset Limited Income Constrained. I can't remember what the E stands for, but there, there you go, employed. That's, uh, um, uh, one of the things that, uh, one of the documents that, uh, data points that show us the need uh, in this community for, uh, workforce housing. And that data shows that in the city of Shelton, forty-five percent of the households, not individuals, households, make fifty thousand dollars a year or less. Uh, so that's, uh, that's one of the data points that, that we've used.
Okay. Thank you for that. I, I, um, I, I would ask, um, that staff consult back with the YMCA and their process for how they, um, consult and, and choose a location. Cause I'm quite certain that, um, they not only use the ALICE information, but they do an in-depth study um, to ensure that, um, their investment also is going to, um, because, uh, yes, they are a community asset. Yes, they're here to help make our, um, lives healthier and whatnot. They're also a business, so they're doing these studies to make sure that they can be sustainable for the future as well. So it's really important because we as community members choose to bring these, um, assets and these partnerships in, and it's really important for us to understand the whole continuum of, um, how we come together to move these types of things forward.
Yeah, uh, so this project, um, this project, by the, this project, I mean workforce housing, uh, did do what they call a market study, uh, to determine the financial feasibility of, uh, the project overall. My assumption is the YMCA did the same thing, uh, pretty much any type of new development will do that before they invest any other dollars. Uh, but I'll look into that and find out.
All right, Joe.
Uh, just point of clarification. So Deputy Mayor, you had, you're suggesting that we move potentially forward with the surplus of the land first and then the DA?
Yes, my suggestion is that if the city truly has no use for this property, then it seems to me most appropriate to surplus the property first. And then as a second step, address what the use for that property should be via the development agreement or any other opportunities that may become available during that time. Um, because I think that my concern is that if we're looking at a lot of the concerns we're hearing about the transparency in the process are saying, we're essentially giving this to a developer to take care of. And we haven't even looked at whether the city really needs it and what the community thinks. So if we would flip the script and start with the surplus and address that issue, that then allows us to move on to, in my mind, the natural next step of what is the appropriate use for that property? And that would lead into the development agreement, et cetera.
Yes, and to answer that, I'm uncomfortable with surplusing the property without an existing development agreement.
So just.
And if I'm, I would argue that there could be designations put along with the surplus. Um, the council could designate a surplus for a specific purpose. Um, but I think that it's important to go through that process.
So just, just, uh, so everybody's aware, uh, if we surplus the property, that does not mean we have to sell it.
Correct.
Yeah, it's, uh, it's just a designation, but, uh, we can, you know, we can certainly do that. Uh, do the surplus first, um, and it won't necessarily affect any other aspect.
So surplus does not include sale of the property?
No, that, no, that's a separate part. That's the purchase and sale agreement.
Sorry, I meant, yes, you are correct, Joe.
Are you saying you could, we could surplus the property? And see what offers we get? And then if we like them, we can get a agreement?
Sure.
Okay. Is that where we're going with this?
Well, I think, uh, we can, anywhere the council, uh, directs, directs me to go, but it's not, um, you know, as I mentioned early on, you can do, uh, the surplus, the purchase and sale and the development agreement on the same night, or you can do them on separate nights. There's no issue there.
Okay.
I, I guess I'm struggling to see what the benefit is of just changing the order of items here.
Well, we would need to do, uh, the surplus, uh, and then, then the, uh, purchase and sale and then the development agreement. Um, but it doesn't really affect the, uh, the end outcome. And all of these things, yeah, and all of these things we can, uh, you know, we can discuss as we move along in the process. Um, we have, uh, February second meeting, uh, with the developer. We have, uh, further meetings after that, so, uh, perfectly feasible.
Jeff, if, if we surplus the property and Costco came in instead, I'll give you market value for that property, would we be selling that property to Costco?
Uh, that would be up to the council, uh, but I would, uh, if Costco came in, I would certainly let you know that.
My question was, is if we get an offer higher than the assessed value or the market value, would we be obligated to sell it to the higher?
No, I don't think that you are.
And in that surplus, are there can, like, uh, conditions that we can put into the surplus language? Or to make sure that, uh, because of the zone use?
Hmm.
How, the house, multi-family housing?
I believe that we can, uh, for, we can surplus it for a specific purpose.
For two hundred to four hundred housing units specifically?
For a specific purpose.
Okay, thank you.
I, I kinda, I kinda get the feeling here that are we losing, are we losing track on the, the need for affordable housing?
Sure hope not.
I hope not, because I'm telling you what, I work with businesses every day and I, I, I hope run workforce in this region, Kathy. And I'm telling you what, um, we've got you guys that are working in the mill that just had their rental burned down. They're paying fifteen hundred bucks a month.
Yeah.
And their electricity was totally bogus and now they're having to live out of county and to commute here and can't find anything affordable.
I'm just getting, being a little nervous, Megan and everyone else that, um, talking about surplusing the property in case a Costco would come in, that, that's not helping our affordable housing.
Now.
Problem.
So we can certainly talk about options, uh, uh, among the council at a different time.
Yeah, okay.
All right. Deidre, do you have one more thing?
Muted.
You're muted.
I just want to wrap up and say that I want to be very clear that I'm no way saying that I don't see the need for the affordable housing nor that this project, I'm siding for or against the project itself. It's simply that I think that the surplus of the land should be the first issue we consider and then move on to the other steps of the, of the process.
I agree. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor, respectfully, I will caution you though, uh, to drift us away from our goal here by throwing these things out on the table. Um, we have set this course, um, we're going through a process and to be changing directions right now or, or even creating the perception that it could be something else, I'm a little, I'm a little disheartened by, by the tactic.
All right. All right, is there anyone else? I see Gary, Gary Miners had his hand up for a while.
Mr. Mayor, we've, we've.
Do we have a time?
On this item, so there is another general public comment item, but now would not be the time.
Yeah, do, I was gonna say, do we have time or no time? We need to move on.
Yep.
Do the rest of our, we got, we're on page three out of ten. So, uh, Gary, could you please, uh, send your comment into Jeff Knighton, either by email or by phone? Cause we, we want to hear from you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I also see someone else named Julie who has her hand raised, so, um, we would like her to also reach out to City Manager Knighton, correct?
Yes, I don't, I don't see her, but.
Well, she's gone now, but she was there, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Donna.
Please call me, please call me or email me.
Right. Okay, we're recessing from our regular meeting to open a public hearing. Aaron B. Miller has information for us regarding twenty twenty supplemental budget.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Deputy Mayor and Councilmembers. This is a supplemental ordinance to adjust our twenty twenty budget. Um, this adjusts two funds, the bond fund and the sewer fund. And this is related to the bond refunding that the council did, oh, in the fall of this year or so. Um, we need to run the payment of the old bonds, old loans through our books. Proceeds are bond proceeds, so it's a, it's a net zero really to the city, but we have to show the expense um, through our books and these two funds are affected. Um, about thirteen point, uh, excuse me, about three point five million dollars in the bond fund. Uh, budget will increase about that much and in the sewer fund, the budget will increase by about six point four million dollars again. This is, um, so that we can finish the accounting transaction of the refunding and happy to answer any questions.
All right. I don't hear any questions, so is anyone signed up for public testimony, Donna? On this?
No, they haven't, Mr. Mayor.
Would you give us a first reading of ordinance number one nine six four dash zero one two one?
Yes, ordinance number one nine six four dash zero one two one. An ordinance of the city of Shelton, Washington, amending the annual budget for the year ending December thirty first, twenty twenty.
All right, do we have a motion?
I move that we forward this ordinance to the February second city council meeting and place it on the action agenda for further consideration.
Second.
Any questions or comments? We have a motion and a second to forward this ordinance to the February second council meeting and place it on the action agenda for further consideration. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Great.
All opposed? Motion carries. This public hearing is closed and resume our regular meeting. Last item on the business agenda is a resolution for on-call qualified pool list contracts. Public Works Director Jay Harris has the details. You still with us, Jay?
Yeah. So, uh, good evening, uh, council, uh, and, uh, good to talk to you guys all again and public. Uh, tonight I have, uh, qualified poolists. So what it is, is, uh, architects and engineers are hired by the city to design projects for us to do studies, to do traffic counts, soils, reports, testing, a little bit of architecture, that sort of thing. Um, the state of. The state of Washington requires that we go through a qualifications-based process every time we want to hire an engineer or an architect. While on the one-by-one-by-one basis, it adds up to significant time on staff. Then we bring each one eventually to you guys. Then we negotiate a price with them second. So that's state law, it's qualification-based, we can't get around that. But we can go out and go and do a qualified pool list. So we chose a bunch of categories that all these people work under, whether it's sewer, water, or traffic. And that we put out an RFQ, and we received all the proposals back. We got 55 of them. And we reviewed them all to preset criteria that we already had and rated each one. And you had to score over 85% to be on the qualified pool list. And we selected three or four people out of each category to fill up the water, sewer, transportation, soils, testing, all the different categories. What this allows us so is to go, right, we're gonna have a rotating list of people that we use out of the three, we'll rotate, you know, 1, 2, 3, 1, 2, 3. And as projects come up and use the, the various people and just have to negotiate price at that point. A lot of these contracts are small. The city manager has authority to sign these. So it does allow staff to move a little quicker, get things done. And any project that's a little larger is going to go to council for financial authorization. Most of these projects are budgeted also, so we have them in the yearly budget. So it does save us a lot of time and money. Grant Osborne has been doing a lot of work for us. And this also allows other people to come in and, and to also work with us and to provide their expertise. So tonight, I just need you to affirm that you can move this to the action agenda. We have 13 firms that are proposed to be selected. And some of these firms are and propose for multiple categories and can work in multiple categories for us. And I'm available for any questions.
All right. Thank you, Jay. Any questions?
Kudos on a great procurement. It's a big deal.
It's a big deal. Thank you to Brooke Keltz. Brooke put this all together and has worked and worked and worked on this. And so she's been in the background putting this all together. This will save our engineering division a lot of time, and we can focus on other things.
Right. Good. All right, Donna, we have any public comment here?
Let me look at these two screens and see what I see. No, Mr. Mayor, there is no public comment.
Okay, do we have a motion, please?
I move to forward resolution number 1183-1120 to the action agenda for the February 2nd Council meeting.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to move to move forward resolution number-
In order, we need the second still unless I missed it.
Eric, did you second it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
We have a motion and a second to forward resolution number 1183-1120 to the action agenda for February 2nd Council meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. All right, first item on the action agenda is a master plan for Eagle Point Park. Community Development Director Mark Ziegler has more information for us.
Thank you, Mayor, Council members. Bringing back to you tonight, contract with Robert W. Droll Landscape Architect for Master Plan Design of Eagle Point Park. No changes have been made since the briefing two weeks ago.
All right. Thank you, Mark. Has anyone signed up for comment?
No, they haven't, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Do we have a motion, please?
Can I, can I ask Mark something first?
Well, as a point of order, we should have the motion prior to any questions from the council.
Okay.
Um, I, I move to approve the contract with Robert W. Droll for Master Plan Design of Eagle Point Park and authorize the mayor to sign on behalf of the city.
Second.
All right, we have a second. Thank you. All right. Any questions or comments?
Yeah. Just one, and I'm sure I've asked this a million times, Mark, so just bear with me, but what is the timeframe and date that you're looking at that this park will be ready to use?
Well, this is just the master plan, so this is the first step in design before construction. So we'd anticipate having the master plan done sometime by September of this year. That would give us an idea of what the cost would be for development as well as phasing. Whether we can afford that within the existing parks budget, or we go out for grant funding or in-kind projects with the community. So we'll have a better idea when we get through this master plan process.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And this would be a good opportunity for people to get involved in our parks district. You know, discuss some of these plans. So people out there that talk about open space, we've got lots of plans down the road, including walking trail probably to town to 101. So, I mean, we do have a parks district. I don't know if there's any openings, Mark? On the-
Currently, actually, there will be an opening soon, yes. There's, and there will be opportunity for public input. We'll have public workshops throughout this master plan process as well. So we'll update the council moving forward, but also have some public hearings and public workshops for to garner as much input as we possibly can from the community to see what they would like to see within this park.
Thank you. Do we have on our website a, or parks plan, or crap, oh, sorry, or a plan for down the road?
We do, our parks recreation, open space and trails plan is on the city's parks web, Parks Department website, another page. And so that is our, that's our roadmap to the future. So yes, this, this has been a priority project for a number of years for the City of Shelton. And open space and trails have been a priority within our public outreach, as listed in that Parks Recreation Open Space and Trails Plan.
Thank you. I'm getting kind of tired, so sorry.
One more comment. So, Mark, remember the, the hours we spent raising money for the clock tower and passing the bucket at the music in the park and all those things where the community really rallied around that project? Is there going to be something like that proposed for the community to get involved again in something like that?
Specific to Eagle Point, we'll, we'll see as we get through the process.
I think that would be exciting to do. Okay.
All right. We have a motion and a second to approve the contract with Robert W. Droll for Master Plan Design of Eagle Point Park and to authorize me to sign on behalf of the city. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. All right, Public Works Director Jay Harris is going to share information with us about a franchise agreement with Mason County.
Evening, Council. Jay Harris, your Public Works Director. This will be the last one. Hopefully, I'm speaking to you on this evening. This is a really good one, okay? So in the county, we have water lines, sewer lines, storm lines, and reclaimed water lines in county roadways in the UGA area. We need an agreement or update the agreement with the county to allow us to own, operate, and maintain those lines. I presented this to you two weeks ago, and there has been no changes since my last presentation. Thank you.
All right. Any comments for Jay on this? Has anyone signed up for public comment?
No, Mr. Mayor, there is no one signed up.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I move to adopt ordinance number-
Wait, wait. Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. We need a second reading.
Oh, no, we do need the motion first. I think we need a nap.
Okay, it's been late.
All right, I move to adopt ordinance number 1959-1120. An ordinance accepting a non-exclusive franchise agreement between Mason County and the City of Shelton for the operations and maintenance of water, sewer, reclaimed water, and stormwater utilities.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. And I have a reading of ordinance number 1959-1120.
Yes, you may. Ordinance number 1959-1120. An ordinance of the City of Shelton, Washington, accepting a non-exclusive franchise agreement between Mason County and the City of Shelton for the operations and maintenance of water, sewer, reclaimed water, and stormwater utilities.
All right. Council members have any questions or comments here? All right, we have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance number 1959-1120. An ordinance, an ordinance accepting a non-exclusive franchise agreement between Mason County and the City of Shelton for the operations and maintenance of water, sewer, reclaimed water, and stormwater utilities. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries. Finance Director Aaron B. Miller is going to speak to us about amending the Shelton Municipal Code.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Good evening again, Deputy Mayor and Council members. This was brought to the council at your January 5th meeting on the business agenda. What this ordinance will do is update our city's municipal code, specifically chapter 3.52.090, and it will provide an exemption to BNO tax for all nonprofit organizations that fall under IRS Section 501(c). Currently, the code allows for an exemption for 501(c)(3). This would include the whole line of them. And there has been no changes to this since that January 5th meeting.
All right. Anyone signed up for public comment, Donna?
No, there isn't, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Do we have a motion?
I move that we approve the ordinance as presented, updating Shelton Municipal Code, Chapter 3.52.090 to provide an exemption to BNO tax for qualifying 501(c) organizations.
All right, and a second reading of ordinance number 1960-1120.
Ordinance number 1960-1220. An ordinance of the City of Shelton, Washington, relating to exemptions from business and occupation tax. Amending Shelton Municipal Code 3.52 entitled Business and Occupation Tax.
All right, questions or comments from the council? I see Joe has a hand up.
Nope, I'm good.
Oh, all right. I'm sorry. All right. We have a motion and a second to approve this, this ordinance as presented. Updating Shelton Municipal Code, Chapter 3.52.090 to provide an exemption to BNO tax for qualifying 501(c) organizations. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? All right, thank you. One more item for Aaron, a resolution to update the master fee schedule.
Uh, thank you again. This resolution was also heard at the January 5th Council meeting on the business agenda. What this does is it updates the city's master fee schedule for 2021. Best practice would have cities go through annually and update their fees for any changes to service and elimination of any fees that are no longer relevant. There has been a change since the January 5th meeting on this. On the January 5th meeting, are the city's fee schedule also included the Central Mason Fire and EMS fees? Those have been removed now on the city's official fee schedule. The fire fees have been duly adopted by their commission and they are in effect. The new ILA, the new inter-local, inter-local agreement between the fire and, between the fire and the city. The city will collect particular fire fees when it relates to a city permit. We can do that without having the fire fees be part of our fee schedule. The ILA specifically states that we have the ability to collect those fees. But if we adopt those fees, they really become our fees, and we want to keep the two fee, the fee schedule separate. So the only change in this is that those fire fees have been removed. All other provisions are the same, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right. Have anyone signed up for public comment, Donna?
Let me take a look here, Mr. Mayor. No, sir, there is not.
All right, do we have a motion?
I move that we adopt resolution number 1184-1120, setting the city's master fee schedule for 2021.
Second.
All right. And I have a reading of resolution number 1184-1120.
Resolution number 1184-1120. A resolution of the City of Shelton, Washington, updating and establishing the city's master fee schedule for fiscal year 2021.
All right. Any questions or comments from the council? We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution number 1184-1120, setting the city's master fee schedule for 2021. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, moving on. How's our time doing?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we extend, further extend this meeting by 10 minutes. We can, we can do it. I feel confident.
All right, well, we're almost there, Deidre.
We do need a second and a vote on that.
Second.
All right, motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
We're going to, what was it, 910?
Mm-hmm.
All right. All right, here we go. Next on the action agenda are contracts for supplemental building code service. Community Development Director Mark Ziegler is up again.
Thank you again, Mayor, Council members. I'm bringing to you tonight two contracts for supplemental building code services. This is similar to Director Harris's pool that he talked about a few minutes ago. In order to keep review time, turnaround time timely, and for economic vitality for the city, we supplement our loan building official with, with these outside firms to assist us in providing those services. And no con, no changes have been made to the contract since the brief on January 5th.
All right, thank you, Mark. Questions or comments from the public?
Let me take a quick look here. No, Mr. Mayor, there is no comments.
All right, thank you, Donna.
You're welcome.
Do we have a motion?
I move to approve the supplemental building code services contracts with Clarity Consulting Engineers and Code Pros LLC and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to, oh, first of all, is there any questions or comments from the council? No, all right. We have motion and a second to approve the supplemental building code services contract with Clarity Consultant Engineers and Code Pros LLC and to authorize me to sign. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Our last action item this evening is an update to city policies. City Manager Jeff Knighton will share the details.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members, Deputy Mayor, members of council and the public. A couple of things to mention here. You first heard the policy update discussion in December, and there were a couple of policies that council asked us to change. Uh, we have done that, but tonight I didn't want to overload you with the administrative policies, which included, uh, you know, all the personnel stuff, everything that's associated with, um, uh, general facilities charges. We did make the change to the GFCs that, uh, council member Nisco, uh, highlighted. Uh, so we made those, uh, made that change in accordance with council's direction. And the other thing I wanted to mention is the council deliberation policy, uh, the three-touch rule is basically what it comes down to. The one that's included in your packet, uh, is, uh, the increase, the one that we had first proposed. That is not, uh, accurate. That's been my mistake. So, but I did want to make sure that council is aware that the policy that you are actually adopting, uh, is, uh, the policy direction that you gave, which is, uh, all items, whether their ordinances, resolutions, motions, basically any item that comes before council. It has the opportunity to be touched at least three times by council before, uh, being asked to make a decision on it. Uh, just a couple of highlights real quick. Two of the new policies that we have are team philosophy policy, which includes, uh, basically how we treat uh, members of, uh, uh, each other and members of the public and other agencies that we work with. Um, includes things like, uh, creativity and initiative, accountability and responsibility, respect. Uh, all those, uh, all those types of things. And that's a new policy for the city of Shelton. We just wanted to make sure that those types of things were highlighted. The other one is a core ethics policy, which is also something that's new to the city of Shelton. Um, those are, uh, those are highlighted uh, with specific examples in your packet as well. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay. Did anyone signed up for public comment, Donna?
No, there isn't, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Can we have a motion, please?
I, I move to adopt pros city policies as presented. Second.
All right, we.
Mr. Mayor, who was the second?
I thought it was Joe.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any questions or comments from the council?
Good work to, uh, staff, Jeff, and I know, uh, Michelle as well. Um, thank you.
So we have a motion and a second to adopt the proposed city policies as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. All right, we'll move on to, uh, Jeff Knighton, City Manager Report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I'll keep this short and we've all, uh, had a, had a long evening. So just wanted to highlight, uh, to the council, the way we're operating under the, the current safe, uh, safe start uh, policy, uh, that was instituted by Governor Inslee. So at the moment, uh, we are still available to the public at any time. Uh, all, most of us are working from home. There is somebody here, uh, in Civic Center every day. Uh, and we are available to answer questions, respond to inquiries, review building permits, all those kind of things. We're just operating under a different structure. And we'll be doing that until our region, uh, the Northwest Region with Mason, Jefferson and Carlin Counties, uh, all achieve the metrics that, uh, that the governor laid out earlier this month. Reduced number of cases, uh, fewer, uh, fewer than ninety percent of the ICU beds filled. There's, there's four metrics and we're keeping an eye on them. Uh, but just wanted to highlight that. I did talk a little bit earlier about the, uh, the code update and the public involvement plan, so we'll be, uh, we'll be uh, working through that process and making sure we involve, uh, community stakeholders in that. And then the last thing is, I believe I mentioned at the last meeting and then, but I could be wrong on this. I, uh, know I've talked about it in briefings with council is that the State Building Code Council, uh, two or three weeks ago, uh, extended the deadline for cities and counties to adopt the state building code, uh, the new one, the eighteen one is basically the one I'm talking about. To, I believe it was July first, uh, today, uh, or late last night, Governor Inslee overrode that extension. So that still needs to be effective now in, uh, February of this year. So, uh, we are working, now we're scrambling to get that back on, uh, the council agenda in time for that to be effective. What will likely happen is at your February sixteenth meeting, uh, you will have a, a presentation in a public hearing on that. And then, uh, adoption at the March second meeting. Uh, so I just wanted to keep you up to date on that. It's kind of seesawing back and forth. And then lastly, uh, just going over the, uh, the looking ahead agenda, uh, as we've talked about extensively tonight, the developer will be giving a presentation on February second uh, about the workforce housing project. Uh, you also have a presentation about stormwater uh, on, at February second meeting. On the business agenda, we'll be talking about, uh, another ordinance for the Department of Ecology's twenty nineteen manual, all these things fit together. So you'll see that, uh, Civic Center, uh, rotating art gallery, uh, which has been great, highlighting that on our social media platform. So even though the building is closed, people are still able to see it. Uh, that's been, that's been a highlight of COVID, if there is such a thing. And a memorandum of understanding about the, uh, the skate park with, uh, the school district. And, uh, again, you'll hear the couple items you heard tonight on your business agenda, the on-call, uh, list and, uh, the, um, the supplemental, the twenty twenty supplemental. That's basically all I have for you and happy to answer any questions if you have any.
All right. Any questions? No? Does the council have any new items for discussion? If not, our next meeting will be Tuesday, February second, twenty twenty-one, six o'clock. This meeting is adjourned at nine oh three.